Not much on the top. It was in the, it was a curl in the back. I was getting ready to tie a ponytail if this had gone much longer.
That would've been cool.
And it's, and the other problem is it's curly. So it's, you know, if we're straight, it'd be one thing, but it's like, good grief. So I have a saying, I get, I get a haircut twice a year whether I need it or not.
So how much longer is, so how much longer is your wife gonna let you keep your beard?
You know, uh, my, my days are numbered, I think. I, I think when you start meeting back in person, you'll see me clean shaven.
You mean you'll be respectable?
I don't know about that, but I'll be clean shaven.
So any bets on when we're gonna start to do, do that bill? You know, what's your, you know, what's your, your over and under?
So, so my other city, Rancho Palos Verdes, is in a hybrid mode right now. The council meets in person with the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. Everybody else zooms in. So they've already made a half step back to it. When we go back to full, uh, fall.
Yeah. I think you're right.
The other thing is our crazy Orange County vaccination system. So my wife and I registered at the same time. My wife got an appointment last night at midnight. She got vaccinated today. I'm still in their waiting room. So that shows you what the OC thinks of lawyers.
Wise people.
Oh, I don't get it.
Even, are we gonna have any children this evening? Your son stole the, stole the show last time.
Yeah, he might make an appearance tonight, so.
Okay.
Likes the new buses, so I'll say that. That might be his item.
From the driver's seat, I hope.
Oh, of course. Yeah.
If you're not pushing the fun pedal, you're not having fun.
And that kid only knows one speed, and that's fast.
Ah. Fearless, huh?
Uh, yeah, we've, yeah, we chase him around quite a bit.
Okay, we're at two minutes before start.
Thank you.
Hello, Pastor Mike.
Here we go. Pastor Mike, do you have audio? Can you unmute and get audio started for you? There we go. There we go. Pastor Mike?
Yes.
Okay, now we've got you. Thank you.
Yeah, for some reason, um, this thing wasn't allowing me to hear anything, so I went, be re-entered.
Okay.
Has the meeting begun yet? It, it looks like it hasn't yet.
We, we're just about to, but if you can get to a well-lit area so that we could see you, that'd be probably preferable.
Right, yeah. I have a, in going on in my office, so I was, was standing close enough so I could see the words, and now I'm going right now to where I have, I have lighting.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and begin the meeting now. Thank you, Pastor.
You bet.
Mayor.
I've got six fifty-nine.
Okay.
So you're ready? Mine just clicked over. You're ready, Elvia?
Ready.
All right. Welcome to our January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one regular city council meeting. Now, we'll now call the meeting to order at seven PM. For the audience tonight, I'm the mayor in service, presiding officer for tonight's meeting. Tonight's public meeting will be conducted utilizing Zoom video communications. This allows the city to conduct essential business and comply with public health administration recommendations to protect the public and city employees to practice social distancing and limit exposure by not allowing an in-person public meeting. To ensure that the public will be able to participate in our meeting, public comment can be submitted as live comments during our Zoom meeting and via email at publiccomments@cityofglendora.org. A brief lineup tonight, uh, meeting will include two special items. Uh, and without objection, I will open up the second item to public comment, two consent calendar items, one unfinished item, and two new business items. Um, I'd just like to remind everyone to be kind, thoughtful, and respectful towards one another. That's what helps make our community a family, and you never know what the future may hold for you and those around you. Madam Deputy City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to conduct an oral roll call and request that each council member respond with present when their name is called. Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Friedandall?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Mayor Portem Davis?
Present.
Mayor Alawas?
Present.
All council members are present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Elvia. At this point, I'd like to have the invocation conducted by Mike Planter, uh, from Glendora Community Church.
Thank you very much. Good to be with you tonight in Zoom and praying for you all, but I'd like to join, uh, have you join me in beginning with prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you, and we are thankful for the technology. We're thankful for each of these folks who are taking of their time to serve our community and to help our city with important decisions. We pray for the citizens of our city. We pray for the people whose lives are affected by the merchandising we do, our restaurants, our, uh, our city functions, our schools, all of these aspects of our city that make life in Glendora such a wonderful life. We pray that you would help us to be able to maintain these things safely. Thank you that in the midst of this pandemic, there is such good news on the forefront that the virus vaccine is beginning to work and that we're able to hopefully see some real progress soon. For these council members, I pray that you'd help them as they take on issues tonight for the good of everybody that is in this city. Help them in their reasoning and their talking through things. For anyone else that brings comments, we pray, as our moderator has already asked, that these comments be seasoned with grace and respectability, and that this meeting, along with all the deliberations of this city, be conducted with a great sense of respect for one another. Thank you again very much, Lord, for your goodness in our lives. Bless, we pray, as they continue to meet in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you very much, folks. God bless.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Planter. This brings us to our pledge allegiance. I'll ask Mr. Josina to lead us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Ellis. If we go, please stand, place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sina. This brings us to our first special item, COVID-nineteen reopening the economy. I'd like to invite our city manager, Mr. Adam Raven, to give the update.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, city council, members of the community watching. We will get through this update as quickly as possible. Uh, it seems like every meeting we have some major changes, and this meeting is no different. Next slide, please. This is our fifteenth update in front of the city council. The fourteen, the fourteen previous ones happened between April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty and January twenty-twenty-one. Um, this, this presentation picks up where the last one left off. If you wanna know where we've come from, you can, uh, look for the, under the special items at COVID-nineteen in each of the nine months worth of meetings, and you can find out there. Next slide, please. So the state of California has a blueprint for a safer economy, uh, opening. This is a periodic transition between stages based on some criteria, including infection rates and rates of at-risk population. You move from purple to red to orange to yellow, um, and a return to normal or green will only be available when vaccinations are mostly complete and rates are so low that there's almost no impact on hospitals. An emergency break of this plan was pulled on November sixteenth, and the second phase of the emergency break, the, the true stay-at-home, stay-at-home order was pulled on December third, um, which implemented a regional approach based on ICU availability. Next slide, please. Yesterday morning, uh, Sunday night, really, we started to get reports that the regional approach would end. As the state said, first thing on Monday morning, due to projected four-week ICU capacities improving significantly, uh, showing with more than fifteen percent ICU capacity, the state would end its regional approach and effective immediately would return back to its blueprint model, and, uh, Los Angeles County was placed in the purple tier. Next slide, please. So just a quick reminder, we haven't showed this slide in a while. Here's the categories on how we move from phase to phase, from purple to red to orange, um, to, to yellow, uh, based on periodic measurements, uh, both adjusted case rate per, per day, per hundred thousand people, and then the case rates based on your most at-risk population. Uh, please note that in order to improve, we'd need to get to under seven, uh, infections per one hundred thousand and an infection rate of under eight percent. And the reason why that's important, next slide, please. When the state ended its, its regional approach and moved back to this, to the blueprint model, uh, this, the county of Los Angeles currently has an adjusted tier rate of seventy-five-point-three per one hundred thousand. We need to see about a ten-fold improvement there, eleven-fold improvement to move forward. We need to, we, we need to about have our infection rate and about cut in one-third, by two-thirds, our, uh, health equity quartile rate. But as compared to other counties in Southern California, the county of Los Angeles is about on par with a lot of the, the surrounding counties in the region. Next slide, please. Taking a look at the map that the state had open, uh, after we exited the regional approach, these are where counties are at as of this morning. Um, we expect new data throughout this week, but as you can tell, the majority of the state's population is currently in the most restrictive purple tier. Next slide, please. So why is it so important in the, in the purple tier is just a quick reminder that the county of Los Angeles also sets its own requirements that can be more restrictive than the state. We heard, um, that outdoor dining could continue effective immediately in Los Angeles County. That can't actually happen till Friday, and we will do our best to explain the rationale and reasoning as, as to why here. So the current health order from the county of Los Angeles was the safer at work and the community health order that was actually issued on May twenty-ninth and, and updated periodically. On November eighteenth, a temporary safer-at-home order was issued, followed by a more significant order on December sixth, uh, to mirror the, the closure of the regional approach of the state. Yesterday, the county of Los Angeles notified us that the temporary safer-at-home order was removed, and we were gonna revert back to restrictions that were in place in mid-November. Next slide, please. Specifically, uh, as it related to a lot of closures, the following is currently allowed as we speak in Los Angeles County as of yesterday. Private gatherings of up to three households and fifteen total people. Um, museums, zoos, and aquariums for outdoor operations at fifty percent, card rooms and outdoor operations at fifty percent occupancy. Miniature golf, go-karts, batting cages, and other outdoor operations at like family fun centers are also allowed at fifty percent occupancy. Next slide, please. Also allowed again are all outdoor recreation facilities. Um, hotels and motels for tourism and individual travel are once again allowed. Fitness facilities are open for outdoor operations at a higher capacity than they were previously. Personal care facilities are currently allowed indoors at twenty-five percent capacity. That indoor malls, shopping centers, and lower-risk retail operations are also allowed at twenty-five percent indoor capacity. Uh, food courts and common areas in those, in those malls continue to remain closed. Next slide, please. The county of Los Angeles has also indicated that, uh, in effect until January twenty-ninth, which is Friday, restaurants, restaurants, wineries, breweries remain open for pickup and delivery only, not outside dining. And non-essential businesses are currently closed from ten PM to five AM. Uh, we have been told that the county needs time to draft a new health order that will be available Friday and effective that day. Uh, we expect some, um, some restrictions on areas like outdoor dining, specifically relates to occupancy and capacity volumes. But, uh, this is a big change from where we were two weeks ago, sitting and meeting with the city council, so wanted to make sure these are provided clearly. Next slide, please. So just a quick reminder that the city must follow the county of Los Angeles. If the state sets the allowable ceiling, the county sets the floor, the city may set a basement on allowable activities. That the, the duties and responsibilities of the counties are result of an executive order from the state of California. Um, and again, the city works with all businesses, organizations, and anyone else to understand the rules that are in place. And again, the city to date has not added any additional restrictions. Uh, we followed those of the county, and many times the city council has advocated for greater reopenings in a smart and scientific way. Next slide, please. We're happy to announce the city hall facilities on Tuesday through Thursday are open to the public again, no longer needing to make an appointment or have other areas that were closed. As we had the spike and dealt with COVID exposures internally, just sort of like the rest of the state of California experienced their own surge. Uh, we were not immune to that, and as a reminder, the computer lab in Bidwell will be open Tuesday, Thursday, and we're again working, uh, hopefully in a couple of weeks for some outdoor library Bidwell form area services as well. We're excited to start those up again. And just a reminder, all staff is always available via appointment, call, video conference, email, anything else, Monday through Friday. And oftentimes, uh, if there's a community issue, we're available in many hours outside of that as well. So contact us if you need something. We'll make sure to get you the help you need. Next slide, please. Also, just a quick reminder, if you may have seen on social media, on-street parking enforcement, uh, returns effective February first, uh, for college, for college students who are remaining at home. Uh, the information and the discounted rates are still here for you. Questions and appointments, call six-two-six-eight-five-two-four-eight-two-five. Again, that's eight-five-two-four-eight-two-five. Next slide, please. I think a lot of the news we hear every day is on vaccines. Uh, there's not enough space in this presentation or probably our council meeting this evening to go over all of the craziness and rules about vaccines. We urge you to visit both the state and county pages. The county has, the state has announced a new system called My Turn, which will help individuals be eligible, be eligible, will be spread, will be accessible through other counties. Uh, it'll help them easily track information, make an appointment, and again, let people know when they can be vaccinated. Again, the county, through their website, vaccinateLAcounty.com. Again, that's vaccinateLA.com. It's a pretty robust site, updated daily, shows you where you can get vaccinated, make appointments, and determines your eligibility as well. If you have any questions, free to contact City Hall, but we really urge you to head to the state and, and county websites for additional information. Next slide, please. And as always, these are the main sites for the state CDC, county of Los Angeles, and state of California. Um, as we continue to see every month, the city's website, um, cityofglendora.org backslash COVID-nineteen continues to be visited very frequently. All the, the updated information, including health orders, restrictions, and the city's correspondence with the county and feds and the state about allowances, economic allowances are all available for the, for those who want to find that information. And with that, Mayor, turn it back over to you with the next slide, Elvia. Happy to answer any questions and provide any clarification, and I see Josina's on the call as well, who continues to do an amazing job with our business community, helping make sure they're informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. This brings us off to our second special item, a study session on the zoning regulations and conceptual plan related to the development of thirty-two-story residential dwellings at twelve-thirty-seven Bonne Cove Avenue. So I would like to, uh, invite our city planner, Mr. Mark Carnahan, to present the report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, and, uh, members of the council. Um, as was stated, um, this item is a study session, uh, on zoning regulations and concept plans for twelve-thirty-seven Bonne Cove Avenue. Uh, no formal action is sought tonight. Uh, city staff is only seeking policy input and comments on this evening. Next slide. The subject site is a vacant parcel on the west side of Bonne Cove Avenue and is bordered by a single-family residential to the west, south, and east. The property is impacted primarily by two conditions. Um, one is the proximity to the two-ten freeway and an existing onsite Caltrans slope easement located on the northern portion of the site. And the second is uneven topography with a sloping, uh, terrain and soil, uh, fill material from the freeway construction, uh, which will require major grading to accommodate any residential project. Uh, next slide. This is, um, a couple visuals to kind of, kind of show you, kind of from perspectives, to kind of show the hill that makes up the site. Obviously, the green area on the left-hand side is the site, and you can kind of note its hillside terrain, uh, comparable, comparable to the adjacent residential around it. Uh, next slide. And just another visual from another perspective showing that hillside. Next slide. This is the kind of slope, kind of showing on top of the slope, looking down, and, and from the street view, looking up from the site. Next slide. Some, uh, pictures of the immediate adjacent neighbors, so it's for comparable neighborhood, um, adjacency. A visual. Next slide. Uh, this is the multiple-family project at the end of the block on the corner of Bonne Cove, um, called Rose Walk. Um, a lot of comparisons were made to it, um, at, uh, the last meeting and, and previous discussions, uh, so just to remind everybody, um, what that looked like and where that was. Uh, next slide. So the project has a general plan, land use designation of low-density residential. Uh, permitted residential densities in this area allow one-point-one to three dwelling units per acre. Um, this, uh, visual just shows the designations around the site. You can kind of see the, that there. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a, uh, visual showing the, uh, zoning. The site zoning is E-six, single-family. Um, this shows again the area of the site in red and its comparable neighborhood. Next slide. So, uh, a brief summary of the entitlement history, the site has had a couple of past examples, just to remind everybody, uh, that, um, there was, somebody brought up today, a question on the, on, that the site had ever been developed or proposed, and that's not true. Um, so the background is in nineteen sixty-six, the site was annexed to the city. In eighty-five, the city initiated a general plan amendment and zone change, and, and from an E-four to an E-six zoning for sixteen parcels, including the subject site near the northern terminus of Bonne Cove, which at the time, per the minutes, it said, uh, quote, "to preserve the existing equestrian and residential development in the area," end quote. At that time, five of the sixteen parcels were keeping horses. Uh, this is the zoning that is still in place today. Um, in nineteen ninety, uh, the city approved a project for six single-family lots on the site, but after multiple extensions, this entitlement expired in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and six, a concept application was received for a nine-home subdivision of the site. After some correspondence with the city, um, and no response being followed up, the applications were terminated in two thousand and nine. Uh, so fast forward to the current developer, um, around two thousand and sixteen, uh, the Clearwater Communities, which is an Orange County-based real estate development company, began trying to, uh, entitle the site. Um, in December of twenty nineteen, uh, the Glendora Planning Commission held a public hearing on the application for a thirty-one-unit proposal, and they, uh, concluded with a recommendation for approval on a five-oh vote. However, at the, at the, uh, hearing before the city council on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty, the application was, was denied without prejudice on a five-oh vote. Uh, next slide. Uh, in twenty nineteen, the proposed project, um, included a condominium subdivision, um, again with thirty-one detached, um, residential homes with two-car garages on this, on the four-point-two-acre site, um, which is about a seven-point-five dwelling unit per acre, um, equation. Uh, the two-story homes ranged in size from, uh, around twenty-two-hundred to about twenty-nine-hundred square feet, uh, with either four or five bedrooms. Uh, there were four different floor plans, um, each, um, available in architectural styles of Craftsman Colonial, or, or they call Santa Barbara, which resulted in four different concepts and, and style for a total of eight different building elevations. The elevations were articulated and carefully detailed, um, and the maximum proposed height was twenty-five feet. Um, the site, um, the southern portion of the site, um, also included a large landscaped, open-sloped area, which was to be maintained by the homeowners association. Uh, just showing a couple of comparison examples here. Next slide. This was the, the visual of what I kind of just described, showing the homes and kind of examples of how they would look on the street scenes. Next slide. This, oh, this was the street scene from what Bonne Cove would see, was from the public street, looking in and seeing the sides of the homes and kind of seeing the sloped areas there on the sides. Next slide. So the site plan included a thirty-nine-foot private roadway drive that bisected the property, um, and basically right, right down the middle with two, um, narrow offshoot, um, access driveways, um, to adjacent homes. The front entrances, um, uh, were fronting the private roadway. It was not gated. Um, and one side, um, of the street also included a, a private sidewalk, um, that, uh, and also that side of the street allowed for, um, guest parking on the street. Um, each home also included a two-car garage and, um, had a private garage access. Next slide. Um, again, the, the major issue for the site, um, includes the freeway, um, issue, and the site again is next to the two-ten freeway. And twenty nineteen, as part of its environmental review and noise study, was required to be prepared, and it concluded that sound walls for noise were, were gonna be needed along the northern and western portions of the site, um, that would have to be between six and sixteen feet in height. Uh, the construction of the sound walls was a mitigation measure for the project, as well as, um, sound rated windows and doors. Um, the northern portion of the project site also included an existing sloped embankment area, which is currently recorded as a Caltrans easement, um, as part of the, the freeway itself. Excuse me. The applicant requested termination of this easement and have been working or had worked with Caltrans for quite a long time. They got to a point where Caltrans agreed to the relinquishment. Once sound walls and grading improvements were fully installed, um, there would be no longer need for that easement, therefore they would relinquish it. Um, next slide. And just to let you guys know where there is, that's this kind of blue, kind of weird-shaped area on that north portion of the site. That's the actual slope for the, for the freeway that would have to be, um, removed. Uh, next slide. So the, the topography of this site, as I noted, is, is, is steep. Um, the elevation, uh, is about a forty-five-foot difference, um, with an average slope of about twenty-one percent. Uh, not all of which is natural. Um, according to the geological report for the site, um, there is a certain degree of artificial fill on the site that was created from soil cut, um, during the freeway construction. Uh, and to accommodate, um, development, um, major site grading would be needed, um, which includes soil export off the site, as well as retaining walls along the west. which includes soil export off the site, as well as retaining walls along the western and southern portions of the property. Finally, note that the grading would also require removal of about fifty-six existing trees from the site. Next slide. I know this is really hard to see, but these were kind of some twenty nineteen versions of the cross-sections of the site. If you are able to see them, I would just say this paid attention to the dash line, which is right above those, those kind of tan-shaped boxes, which are representative of the houses. That area kind of shows the existing grade. Next slide. So obviously, conceptual plan was also prepared with the project in twenty nineteen, and it indicated how landscaping could be incorporated around seventy or so trees, which offset those removed trees. And this is kind of what the visual showed, and you can kind of, it makes it a little bit easier to see what the twenty nineteen proposal was. And it kind of shows those two offshoot roads on the western end there. It also shows basically this trail kind of thing that connected and went down into the sloped area. Next slide. So this is the visual for the Clearwater Communities' new revised development proposal. The proposal's new, new development would, again, be off Bonne Cove via a private drive. And the entry and the first six homes, in fact, are exactly the same as previously proposed in terms of its location. The, the major changes occur towards us, towards the very western edge of the, of the site. The house designs and floor plans would also remain the same as previously presented. Next slide. So the major changes to the plan include a few things. One is a reduction in lot, lots. There'd be one less lot. It was thirty-one, and now they're proposing thirty. One is, again, the layout changes, which are at the westernmost portion of the site, which they would be eliminating those two driveway offshoots that I, I showed you. And it would be just a cul-de-sac bulb with all the homes oriented facing the street in a more of a traditional pattern. The next one would be the subdivision of the lot itself. They were going to be doing a condominium type subdivision, and now they're proposing doing fee simple type lots. As a planner, though, I would want to note that, note that even though they are considering fee simple lots now, a homeowner association would still likely be needed just for the fact that they're still doing, you know, a community park area, a private street with private utilities, and there's also some, you know, community entry areas. So there's quite a lot of few community stuff that would still need to be maintained by CCNRs, and an HOA would probably still be needed for that sake. Next would be the community open space changed. Before, it was a small area between lots twenty-nine and twenty-eighth that provided primarily access to that community hillside sloped area that was a walking trail, went all the way down into the hillside area itself, and it kind of provided a seating area within that, that trail area and its terminus. Now it's proposing a small area between lots fifteen and sixteen at the farthest west portion of the project site, which, while small, I, I would probably note that if it could be reviewed with the views, that it might have an opportunity to have some great sunset views, because it's the way the site is up high, it could look straight out really nicely. The issue area is that there's a sound wall that looks like it would be right in front of the, of the park area. So they might have to do some adjustments to that sound wall, or maybe allow some glass partitions or something in it to allow that, that view to happen. But it could offer, offer some quite nice views, even though it is a small area. So the, next would be the grading and the hillside walls were adjusted, and that community walking trail that I mentioned was eliminated. The applicant states that they believe that the, this proposal is better as it allows for fewer retaining walls, and the, they feel that the walkway trail being eliminated is also better. The item, I would say, from staff would need to probably explore that further if the proposal were to continue. The Sequo document raised retaining walls as a potential visual issue, which, which dictated them lowering some of those walls. I would say the grading, revised grading is a better proposal, but some of those wall conditions would need to be looked at a little bit further. So that I would probably say we need to do is a little bit more investigation on. The other concern I have with some of the revisions on that hillside that would need to be kind of clarified in the future is that before the HOA was going to be maintaining the entire slope area on the south. And one concern is, right now, the revised proposal with fee simple lots have those lines of ownership going all the way north-south, which means the hillside would be split up into eleven separate ownerships, which sometimes we all know that slopes on, on hillside lots where the, the homes are on top and they look down sometimes aren't as maintained as much, because the homeowners aren't seeing it as much, maintaining it as much, as well as having multiple owners of the same hillside don't obviously sometimes get as well-maintained. With that said, I'd probably say even if they do go fee simple in the future, it might be a betterment for the project to continue looking at that hillside areas being HOA-owned and maintained. Access would have to be a question for maintenance, but it's something that we'd have to further explore. Next slide. So just want to quickly show some quick visuals of, for the revised change. Again, this is the kind of a simple version of the, of the new site plan. You can kind of see the terminus there with that green area for the park on the far west. Next slide. This is a really complicated plan to look at, but it's basically superposing both project sites on top of each other. So the only thing to kind of note here is everywhere where you see red, it indicates a change, basically in the old plan. And you can kind of see that there were a lot of slight adjustments throughout the whole project from the west to the central portion of the project site. While, while it looks very similar, there were a lot of subtle changes, except for the very far eastern part, which you can kind of see is very cleanly black. So you can kind of see that that really didn't change much at all. Next slide. So this is just another version of the site plan, showing it, and it just kind of shows where some car keys, cross-sections were. Next slide. They prepared some cross-sections again because of the hillside nature of it. And again, it's, it's still pretty steep, a lot of grading is going to be occurring. And again, just note, if you were able to squint really carefully, that dash line on all the plans is indicating the existing grades. You can kind of see again that major grading is going to be occurring, and it's going to be really being cut from the north portion of the site and being put on the south portion of the site to level off that, that middle portion. And again, a large export number would be, would be coming off. Next slide. This is a little bit easier cross-section to kind of see that, that dash line, again, indicating the existing grade is a little bit easier to see here. Next slide. So again, if the applicant was to proceed with the proposal as it is here, it would need to basically have to submit brand-new formal applications with, involve new noticing of public hearings with the planning commission and city council. They would need to have a formal new environmental review, as well as application for a general plan amendment from the low to medium densities, zone change from E six to planned development, attentive track map for the subdivision to create thirty fee simple lots that range from three thousand to about seven thousand square feet. The average lot size being around five thousand square feet. A development planner review to, for the project as kind of presented. And again, the environmental review, a new environmental review. Next slide. Density was a question at the last meeting. That was kind of the, the big question. So density and the potential general plan and zone change would allow the increase of unit density, obviously. A zone change from E six to planned development would be neat, needed. And again, that would be a policy question for the planning commission and the city council to ultimately decide. The council previously commented at the last meeting, an openness to consider a revised development for the site at an R one standard density. Note that based on the subject lot size and R one density standard would have the site at about twenty-four units. The current proposal reduces density again from one house from thirty-one to thirty, but it is not at the R one density or lot size standard dimensions. The developers' view is that a reduced number below thirty would increase sales of cost for the homes, and also due to the construction challenges of the site, freeway adjacency issues, and topography and soils conditions, as I mentioned before. This table, I kind of just wanted to include, because it visually shows the gender plan designations for a density for comparison, just to kind of clarify. So the low-density residential, which is the type, is the current density. Sorry, there's a typo. I said, I should say maximum D U. They're not minimum. And that's at one point one to three. The one that a lot of the neighborhood around them are at, not all of them, the majority of them are at that low-medium-density residential, which is the three to six. And the medium-density residential, which is being proposed, is the six to eleven acres. And I kind of did the math equation for you, kind of in the middle there, the project size is four-point-one-five-four acres. I kind of broke down each density for each site, so you can kind of understand what density numbers would be allowed by the general plan. Again, it would go from, its current allowance would be four to twelve units, which is the current site designations allowance. And what's being proposed is the twenty-five to forty-five density allowance. I also listed there the comparative barrel zonings for, for understanding. Again, note that the PD zoning is allowed for all of these. So regardless of the, of it, it could be applied. Next slide. And that leads me to the, to the fact of the PD. I mean, so while staff's not going to take a position much on the density, because that is, that is a policy question for you guys to discuss. Staff does want to kind of really emphasize that a planned development zone, which I won't bore you again with reading what, what is intended for, is really a site-specific zoning, and it really is a good zoning tool for this type of development based on its topography and fee freeway adjacency and other issues, where you don't have to do traditional type zoning and development standards. You can kind of customize it based on its, based on the site issues. So regardless of where you go there, we'd still probably suggest doing a planned development zoning. Next slide. So bedroom count was another issue that was raised at the city council meeting last time, and there was some concern and that there should be more bedrooms on the ground floor. Previously, the project had eighty percent of the homes with ground floor bedrooms. The new plan has slightly less. It has seventy-six percent with ground floor levels. But I probably would just want to clearly emphasize that even seventy-six percent is still high in terms of a, a project like this in the industry. And again, three out of four of the plan types being proposed have ground for, for bedrooms. So in this case, it'd be plans two, three, and four, not plan one. So last point I'd probably just want to raise is that we just want, what, what the council to help us identify any site or design issues early on that, that we can kind of, kind of start looking at. Next slide. So again, this is a study session, and because it's a study session, we can, it's exempt from Sequo because it's an advisory and nature, nature meeting. But again, the, the next proposal that comes through would have to go through an environmental document all over again. We might be able to dust off some of the old documents and revise them, but the, the official process of noticing the state agencies and all that, getting comments would all, would all begin again. Next slide. The noticing for this, for this, tonight's meeting went out on January fourteenth. It involved a very large radius area of two thousand feet. As of today, I have only received one phone call inquiry comment, and that was a couple hours ago from a resident named Ben, and he just wanted to kind of let me know about his concern about the site being built on. He felt feels that it's a hillside area, and it should be built on. There's, you know, water issues with the drought, and that he has a citywide growth concerns, I would say, in general, of that building. Besides that, that's all I received. We might receive some more tonight. Next comment, or next slide. Oh, one, one back? No, I lost a slide. I was just going to mention that, closing up here, that I apologize for the length of the, of the meeting here, but the, it does have some policy guidance we are hoping to seek from you tonight. Again, it's a study session, so it's supposed to allow the council and the public an opportunity to see the proposal for this concept and comment on its current version to provide us insights, and as, as the applicant finalizes project details for a formal application supplemental. Again, the recommendation tonight is to just receive and file a staff report and provide direction and input regarding the concept. Staff's available for any questions that you might have, as well as the applicant has a few team, team members that could answer questions, and I think their representative, John Loper, wants to make a short presentation also.
Thank you, Mark. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to present. Mr. John Loper, you have ten minutes.
Thank you, members of the city council. I appreciate your time and, and listening to us. My name is John Loper. I was brought into this project after the last city council meeting. I'm a professor at USC in the Real Estate and Planning Group. And I've been known, the applicant, for about thirty years, and I've seen a lot of their projects. I've done a very little bit of work for them over the few, last few years. But I am a design and entitlement consultant who helps people with their projects and with their design. So if we go to the next slide, I am disappointed we're not able to do this in person, because then I could have gone to Spaghetti Eddies for dinner before the meeting. And so I'm missing that. Hopefully, they'll be opening soon. I was brought in to redesign the project, and based on a lot of the input that I saw on the video of the council meeting and some of the comments. And we looked at this project and said, how could we change this to make it look and feel more like a single-family home subdivision? And we changed a series of things. We changed the property to fee simple lots from a detached condominium. So everyone owns their lot. They own their land. They own their house. We extended the street and removed about twenty percent of the homes on the previous plan were on private driveways. And we created it so every single home fronts the street. Everyone has a front porch engaging with the street. We extended the cul-de-sac and repositioned all the houses on the west end. And the street is a traditional street with parking and a pedestrian sidewalk and a very typical cul-de-sac. So all the shared driveways were eliminated, and the houses have varied sidebacks. The street's curvally linear. So everything isn't in a straight line like you'll see in a lot of dense projects. This looks very much like all the subdivisions I grew up in, in the Sangueiro Valley. Next slide, please. We reduced the density. We're down to seven-point-two lots per acre. We increased the average lot size to five thousand twenty-six square feet, and the largest lot's about seventy-eight ninety-eight square feet. The redesign of the project and eliminating shared drives put more space on the lots. So we have a lot more lots that have bigger backyards. And plus, we have, all the lots have two-car garages with driveways that can park extra cars. So if your kids are home from college, I teach, and a lot of kids are at their parents' house, there's places to park. One floor plan, the smallest floor plan, the one, the only floor plan that does not have a downstairs bedroom has one car driveway, and all the other floor plans have two car driveways, so you can have two in your garage and two out front, which is, is very typical of a single family. Plus, we have additional guest parking on the street. Next slide. The redesign allowed us to create much more flat, usable backyards. And some of the homes' backyards did not change, but a lot of them were increased, about twenty to thirty percent for many of the lots, over half of the lots. They range from ten feet to fifty-five feet deep and thirty-nine feet to forty-five feet wide. So they are a very usable yard. Two-thirds of the lots have backyards that exceed the twenty-five-foot requirement minimum in the R one zone. So we were able to get a large portion of the lots, two-thirds of them, to have, that meet the R one zone. And all of the lots, a hundred percent of them, have the minimum five-foot side yard that the R one zone requires. So we looked at all the R one zoning and said, how can we design a lot of the design elements in there? So this is not a zero-lot line project. It's not a project that has a car parked between homes. This looks like a single-family home with driveways in the front, front yards for all the homes, and rear yards and side yards on both sides. Next slide. We looked at how we could use the space, and the previous plan had a walkway that went around the hill on the south side of the property. And it needed a minimum four-foot retaining wall along the whole length of it to hold the walkway up. And it didn't provide any flat space to sit and relax and do anything. And we felt that a private park at the end of the cul-de-sac would be a much better, more usable space. It'd be a safer space, because it'd be visible from everyone on the street. And because the views are so nice from this portion, we plan on putting a plexiglass in that once, in that section of the sound wall, so you can see the views of the Sangueiro Valley and the wonderful mountains to the west. And we created a flat area, so it could have some lawn. The kids can run around. You can go out with your neighbors after dinner or, and sit on the benches and talk to your neighbors while the kids get to play together once we all get out of the COVID process. And so this would be maintained by a homeowners' association. There would be no cost to the city. And so this would be maintained by a homeowners association, there would be no cost to the city. As you drive in, you'd see it through the end of the cul-de-sac, so it's a very visible park. And we just thought this was a better amenity. Walking trails are very nice, but when they're behind people's houses, sometimes things people, kids can play and do things and they're not visible and they do things we don't want them to do versus a park that's right at the end of the cul-de-sac that's open, that the neighbors can keep an eye of what's going on. And because we redesigned the the street and extended the cul-de-sac, we have about a 3,000 square foot park at the end. And it's very usable. Next slide. On the revised grading plan has significantly fewer retaining walls. As I mentioned, the entire walkway along the south side that that went in front of about seven lots needed a minimum four foot retaining wall, that's been eliminated. We eliminated retaining walls on four other lots. So we have a much more natural slope area on the back, plus it the revised plan allows to increase the size of some of the backyards. So instead of having a whole series in some places, three retaining walls, one in the lower end of the slope, one in the middle for the sidewalk, and one in the upper part of it, we've been able to reduce the number of grading walls significantly, and we think that improves the project. And that was a concern that had come up in previous discussions. The free, the homes are all lower than the freeway, plus there'll be a sound wall on the back. And a majority of the slopes and retaining walls in this project are not visible from Bonny Cove. And we've eliminated the retaining walls that were all visible from our neighbors to this, a lot of the retainers, not all of them, but a lot of them that were visible from our neighbors to the south, so we think this prevents a better look, more natural look. And it's interesting to note that we have support of many of the homeowners that are contiguous nearby the site and adjacent to the site, which is a good thing, we were trying to think about how the project affects the homeowners and we've designed it accordingly to reduce the impacts. Next slide. Some of the questions regarding density, the planned development zone has some advantages. We're able to design a zone that meets the unique characteristics of the site, and we basically come up with a site plan that provides three 30 free, fee simple lots, they're designed like an R1 lot and create a property that when you drive in will look like any other R1 subdivision in a lot of respects. It also provides some protection for the city. We are asking for a general plan amendment and to the medium density, which allows between six and 11 units, we're only proposing seven units. But the planned development allows a zone ordinance basically to be written. And that zoning ordinance is could be written to say this 30 lots is the maximum number of lots. And if that someone wanted in the future to change it, they would have to go back to the city council for a discretionary review, it's not an automatic, it's not by right. It would be a discretionary review to change the zoning code for a new site plan. So it gives, the planned development gives the city some stability in terms of what's allowed and any future developer that were to come in and change it if this was not built at some point would have to get a discretionary approval. And we are willing to have a condition of approval that and or even a recorded covenant that says there would only be 30 detached single family homes on fee simple lots on the property. So it protects the city by spelling out the maximum number of units with the planned development zone. Next slide, please. I wanted to mention, because there's been some comparisons to this project, to some of the small lots detached condominium projects such as the project that was done by Olson just to the south of us on Bonny Cove. The way this redesign of the project is that all of our homes are funding a 39 foot wide street with parking and sidewalk. And that's completely different than a lot of the small lot developments, such as the Watts Carroll Vermont project or the Rosewalk Olson project, where they have a 25 foot alley and the and the homes are just really close to the alley.
Mr. Loper, can you wrap this up in about 30 seconds?
Sure, so I guess probably the biggest issue is that we redesigned this, so it looks and feels like our traditional R1 zone type subdivision, we've incorporated a lot of the R1 zones. We do have a plan that provides the look and feel of R1. Density derives price, and if density, in order to get the price point that we're trying to get, we need to have the 30 lots. And but believe, we believe we've tried to divide, design a subdivision that has all the attributes of a single family home project. So on that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to engage in any discussion, answers, anything that you, the council has for tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loper. At this point, I'm going to open up public comment, I'll now invite members of the public to address the city council on this matter and this matter only. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Is your time to speak uninterrupted, please address your comments to me, the presiding officer. Public comment is limited to 30 minutes. If you'd like to request to speak, select the raise hand icon in your Zoom before the close of the public comment period. You will then be called on once your turn to speak. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this or any written comments?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, we have received no email correspondence or correspondence related to this item and no requests from Zoom to speak on this item.
Thank you. Then I will close the public comment period, bring it back to council for discussion. Mendel, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you, Mark and John, for the good words that you've said. John, could I just ask you a couple of things? You mentioned a price point, so what is the price point, the range? If you can, if you can share that?
Yes, we believe between 700 and 800, 900,000 in that range, these are smaller homes than a lot of the more expensive recent subdivisions. And they have a variety of bedroom count, but probably 700 to 900 is probably a good range.
Okay, great, thank you. And also, John, so you said that an HOA will will be a part of this, am I to understand that correctly?
Yes, an HOA will maintain the street, the sidewalk, and the park that's proposed at the end, so they would all be maintained at HOA responsibility, plus they would have CCNRs that would you know, involve making sure everyone maintains their house.
Great, does Mark, you you seem to vacillate on that a little bit. So are you comfortable with what John just said?
I mean, I guess the CCNRs can be written to to regulate hillside, I mean, that's that's true. The question is, should they be, should the hillside be split up with individual owners with CCNRs that regulate maintenance standards for the hillside or or could, or should the piece of a loss just include like the flat portion? And then 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 the hillside area be a separate lot that that's owned and maintained by the HOA? It's kind of a, it's more of a question, it's more, it could be done either way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just a couple of other things. I am the bedroom guy, John, and I I I appreciate the effort that's been made. I frankly wish that the eighty percent could be could be maintained. So maybe that can be a discussion point with you and your team. And I I only say that because as population continues to rise, we older folks are not inclined to love to go upstairs and I do appreciate the changes that have that have been made. Was disappointed to see it slid back a little bit. So I would hope that maybe something could be done there. But I do appreciate the awareness that the team has given to all of this. As to the number of homes, frankly, reducing it by one is a good step. I I think it's a little bit more dense for my taste. But with that said, I understand with the mandates that are being talked about from our state and the housing needs that we have, the the people that are moving in kind of needing the homes that they that they need, especially at a price point that you have said, I'm 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 satisfied with what with with what has been said. And with that, that's all, that's all that I've got, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bedroom Guy. David?
Hi. Thank you again, Mark and John, for the excellent presentation. It's nice to see some of the changes come about and I sat through the first meeting, so I very familiar with it, so this is a a nice change and a good opportunity. I'm not concerned with the lot sizes, because having done a little research, the lots all the way back to Baranca, right adjacent with the freeway, these sizes aren't alarmingly different, so the the volume doesn't alarm me a bit, I think it's a nice fit. I do have a question, the hillside is a is a curiosity or a concern. When you get hillsides, and I think we've all alluded to, and we recognize this, so would love to see some thought as to exactly how that might work. Because the hillside from the south is going to be present, and it's going to be a visual thing, and I just want to make sure that the neighbors to the south are looking at something that's aesthetically pleasing and not an eyesore. But somehow, if we can figure out what that solution is, I would support an aggressive solution. Is there a wall along that at all, and if so, what the height of that on the south edge?
Yeah, there'll be retaining walls, and it would vary in height from east to west. No. Did it go up to 16, was it like 16, is that right?
So this is John Loper. We have a six foot retaining walls on the side closest to Bonny Cove, and a portion of these walls actually exist, but we're replacing them with walls right on the property line. Some of the walls don't, that are there now, don't actually follow the property line. And then the wall does vary up to 13 feet at one point, all the way and back down to six and then to two as it comes around the corner like lots 24 and 25. We've eliminated the retaining walls at the bottom middle, all the way from lots 26 through 19, and we retained, eliminated several of the upper lots, like I think 18, 19, 20s retaining walls, so there so they they are less than there were, significantly less walls than before, but I believe that that lower wall's about the same. But 13 is the highest now in the new plan.
So you you removed the terrorist walls that you were referring to?
Yes, because we were able to move the street a little bit closer to the freeway by eliminating all those shared drives. And that way, we have much more natural slope coming up to the backyards of a lot of the lots on the west side, plus the backyards are actually a little bigger now.
Okay. On on that 13 foot wall section, how does that impact the adjacent neighbors, is that going to be a a tall wall that they're looking at and that's their total view or the kind of blend in with the what's there now?
I believe that some of the wall is new and some of it's replacing existing walls, and then above that, there will be slope to the backyards. Right now, it kind of slopes at a regular rate. And I believe that there's agreements with some of the homeowners regarding the replacement of the walls, because they actually have a wall that's on a subject property.
Yeah, I read I read your comments on that.
Yeah, and I believe it's about nine feet at its maximum height, that current wall. So there'll be one section where it'll go up to 13 now, but it's portions of it are nine, and we're going to have anywhere from six to 13, then down to two.
I see, okay. One last question.
Be retaining walls on the west, but they those don't change much, but they still will be retaining wall at the west property line. There'll be like nine, around nine feet, but that that was still consistent with what it was previously.
Okay, great. Last question I have, and it's optimism. If if we were approved and this was a go, how soon would you guys be ready to put a shovel in the ground?
As soon as we could get plans approved officially. The market is such that these, there's a lot of demand for homes. But we'd be ready to resubmit the plans for formal approval through the city council and record the sub track map and then submit the plans for building permits and the grading permit. I mean, all of those things take several months for each step, but we're very rapidly ready to have this project go forward. I mean, my guess is by the time it gets great, a plan checked and graded after the approval date, homes would start going up in about a year. Because the plan check process takes a little while.
Yeah, those are things out of your control, some of it, so, all right, very nice, thank you for the presentation, no more questions.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Michael, before we move on, I I know we we have a resident Erica Landman that was trying to get here in time for public comment. And she she came in a little bit late, would anyone object to allowing her to speak at this time?
How about if we wait until after all of us have our opportunity and I'll reopen public comment?
Okay, appreciate that. My, you know, John, when you were talking about the the retaining walls, is it possible to reduce the mass of those retaining walls to grade that south hillside a little bit less, so instead of having a 13 foot retaining wall, maybe we have you know, a couple of four foot retaining walls going up to a six foot or something?
We can look at that, the one issue we have is we want to collect all the waters that comes off the slope and have it get down to where we put it into the storm drain at Bonny Cove. And part of the reason that retaining wall on the south property line is to get it up to a grade so that can go down in an at the two percent grade. So there's some limitations based on flow of water. But we could look at potentially parts of it being terraced.
Okay, understood, so if it if it's there, is there the possibility of us having some sort of a requirement for the landscaping on that lower level to hide that retaining wall? I know there's a lot of trees there already, and there are going to be some trees removed, but it would be nice to make sure that at least that lower level is landscaped in such a way so that the neighbors to the south have some buffer between, before seeing that, because that that lower level, as as Mark alluded to, is not going to be maintained, you know, to the same level that the upper ground is, there's not going to be grass there. No one's going to be playing volleyball in that area, that's that's going to be left more natural. So is there the ability for us to require landscaping in such a way to be able to hide that? That'd be a question to you, John.
Okay, so in terms of the landscaping, we will be landscaping it as part of the grading process, so we'll all get landscaped. And we'll, we also are replacing the trees we're removing on a two to one basis, so their landscape plans have a lot of trees on that southern slope to help hide the views. So that will be planned. In terms of the homeowners association, they will be overseeing the maintenance of all the landscaping of people's, the front yards and the the rear in terms of making sure they maintain it. And normally, as part of CCNRs, I'm on two homeowners boards. As part of the CCNRs, we enforce things like that. And so that's part of the advantage of having a homeowners association involved. So they can enforce it, the landscaping would be installed though, irrigated with drip systems, the trees and the plants as part of the grading, so when you buy your house, you will have a fully landscaped slope. That hopefully will keep it in good shape and the HOA can enforce the neighbors and make them do it, and ultimately, most CCNRs say that if you don't maintain it, the homeowner association can come in and clean it up.
Okay, and then, Mark, a question to you, the development that we have with the attached homes over on Shady Lane just east of this, that that's zone for planned development, is it not, already?
No, planned development was just being proposed just for the site.
Oh, okay, what what is the zoning where the Shady Lane properties are, you know?
I think I think it's a split zoning, it's both, it's both the the E6 and it's, well, gender plan wise, it's both the low and the medium. So it's the, if you go back to my, the the chart that I had, it would be or the plan, you kind of see, it I think the two or three lots of the farthest east end of the terminus have similar zoning as what this one is currently. The rest of Shady Lane has a higher higher density.
Okay, I'm 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 talking about the attached homes on the east side of Sunflower at Shady Lane.
Maybe I have to go back, Jeff, do you know what he's talking about? I'm going to ask for a lifeline. Jeff might might be able to know that.
He's trying to get in there.
Yeah, I'm not sure where he's talking about, so I have to find it on the map here.
Are you talking about by the freeway, Gary?
Yeah, right by the freeway on ramp on Sunflower.
Yeah, the Sunflower on ramp, right there to the
Oh, okay. I know what you're talking about. The single their single story, they're right.
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't know what that one is. I'll look that up.
It's a PD zone. It's an R-one PD, R-one with a PD overlay. So there was some, I think that was developed in the eighties too, right? Looks like
It looks like it.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-seven. And it was a PD, R-one with a PD overlay as a zoning, so similar type of of zoning probably. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, appreciate. And then, you know, just just to make the the comment that, you know, understand the economics of of trying to make this profitable. We want to see a project built. We don't want to see another project that stalled for a long time. And one of the other things that we looked at is to reduce the the or to try to get the lot sizes that would be necessary for R-one might create a design where the road that went into this development would be right along the freeway with a giant sound wall right next to the road as opposed to coming into a neighborhood with homes on both sides of it. So even though those few first few lots are extremely small, I'm okay with that just because of the design restrictions that you have on this particular lot. So and I also like the idea that John mentioned that we have the ability to put a restriction on this of a maximum of thirty. So just in case this project doesn't get built, there's not going to be a developer years from now that comes back with the idea of trying to increase the number of homes here. So with all of that, I like what I'm seeing. Naturally, I'd like it to be less dense, but but this this works. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Thank you, and thank you, John, for these changes. Thank you, Mark, for all your work and your presentation on this. I love it that you cleaned up that west end and put some green space in there. That really makes a difference in all those other little things that you've done to try to incorporate as much of the R-one guidelines as possible. I think that's great. Some of the questions I had about that slope and maintenance and the HOA, you've already answered. The only thing, and you know, the perfect world, I would love for the price point on these homes to maybe be between five and seven, so that all those folks that have fled out to the east to buy homes would come back to Glendora to live. All the kids and grandkids would come back here. But the other piece of that, even though I know we don't have an inclusionary resolution, is if there's anything that could be done along those lines to either I know probably the idea of setting aside one or two to make them more affordable. But if there's some other way that an investment could be made for down the road to help with the city's housing, that that would be tremendous. But I think the changes you've made really look like you took everything that we were saying before into account. So thank you. And Mr. Thompson doesn't have to buy one of those that doesn't have the first floor bedroom. So I think you're okay on that percentage. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I just have a few questions. First, I like the removal of the flat lots on the west end and the little open space park that you folks put in there. I think it was a nice little addition there. I didn't see it on there, but maybe you can help me with this. Has the drainage been affected and is there a retention base basin required or on the property? I believe it's required. I I thought last time there was a retention basin.
Last the last time the proposal was to do the underground containment system underneath the right at the entrance of the roadway. And I think this would probably be the same in terms of of the majority of the water being basically flowing toward the private street. And then going down towards the entrance, and it'd be underground chambers there.
So you're going to put chambers underneath the underneath Bonny Cove?
None under Bonny Cove, under the under the private street entrance.
Oh, so is it is it in the design currently?
I don't know if they got that far, but I I imagine being had the slope slopes the way it does. I don't think they have a choice.
This is John Loper. Yes, it is planned to have that. It's a very similar design as we had previously. The amount of impervious space has of of square footage has gone down because of all the shared driveways being eliminated. But the idea is to have a retention under the street of the the new private street to retain the water before it goes out. So the the overall drainage concept is very similar. The total amount of water may be slightly less.
So I remember last time, I believe it was in the front of the project is where the retention was going to be at.
Correct. The whole street slopes down towards Bonny Cove. So the idea was to collect it. And that that's our low spot. So that would be where all the water gets collected and retained and then slowly let out. And then the sloped water, the water from the slope, one of the reasons we have the existing retaining walls there between on the neighbors in the south and the new retaining walls that we're replacing is so that we can collect all the sloped water and have it flow and then be in go into the underground retention. And by the way, I wanted to mention that we've been working with the neighbors to the south about replacing that wall, and they're agreeable to it. So we we've talked to them.
Well, the reason why partially I brought that up for is you mentioned, unless I was misspeak, that you on the south side, you're going to have the water flow into the storm drains.
I believe it enters in the storm drain after we retain what we need to retain based on the engineer's calculations.
I I thought that all the runoff of the water had to stay on property.
It does inside those containment chambers. And then then after after the overflow is allowed to go over out.
Okay, are these
Purged them out, and then if it's a, you know, one of the storms we tend to have in the same every once in a while, when it really just comes down, the overflow goes out.
They're all they're required to contain the first three quarters inch of the rain of rainwater, which would be contained within those storm storm chamber chambers.
Okay, and to I guess to extend the question that my colleagues asked, approximate construction time once all the approvals were were done, what's the estimated that?
We believe about nine months after approvals, we can start grading. There's a couple of months of grading, putting the street in, getting the fire hydrants and the water in, so we can then start construction of the lots. It would be phased. We wouldn't be building thirty homes all at once. But the homes only take six months to build. So a year from now, we might be seeing getting close to a year from approvals, we'd be getting close to seeing the first houses going up. We have to have a a street and and live water before we can build anything with wood.
Is Clearwater Communities planning on being the final developer?
It they may be they there may be other developers they bring in to help them.
So will they retain ownership?
That's to be determined.
Okay, this question is for Jeff. It's my last question. What's the trajectory after tonight for going through the different hoops the developer has to do to get it to back to us?
The they if they decide to move forward, they'll have to submit a new application for the entitlements. And that will go through a hearing process with the planning commission and then to the council for a final decision.
If you were to just have a guesstimation of how what how long that process, we're talking six months, a year?
Yeah, I think at least six months is fair to say. It's a general plan, and I don't know exactly what. I think the big question will be depending on the changes to the project. What we're seeing now is just conceptual. So when we get, you know, more refined, you know, submittal with details related to grading and and other issues, and then would have to update the there was a mitigated nave deck for the California Environmental Quality Act portion of the application. And depending on how long, that's one thing that might take a few months to complete. So I would estimate, you know, six to nine months-ish to go through all of that, and that would be, I think, pretty quick.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the presentations and all the answers. I greatly appreciate that. Does anyone have any final comments before I open up public comment again? No?
I have one more question.
All right, David.
So the back to the drainage issue, the V ditch on the south slope would actually flow east. How what I'm hearing?
This is John Loper. Yes, it flows east downhill towards the Bonny Cove side of the property.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. So at this time, I'm a reopen public comment period. And I'll invite members of the public to address the city council on this matter and this matter only. Speaking speakers limited to three minutes. It's your time to speak uninterrupted. Please address your comments to me, the presiding officer. Public comment is limited to thirty minutes. If you would like to request to speak, select the raise hand icon in the Zoom before the close of the public comment period. You will then be called on when it's your turn to speak. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one raised hand from Patrick Donahue, and I know Erica's waving as well. And Patrick, are you there? We're going to ask for you to unmute, and you will have three minutes. Can you state your name and you'll have three minutes?
Yeah, this is Patrick Donahue. I actually rose my hand, raised my hand and provide some clarity on some the retaining wall conversations and with Clearwater Community. That all got cleared up during the conversation, so there was no reason for me to provide any additional.
Okay, thank you. Erica?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't find the hand raise feature. Sorry about that.
Okay, you got three minutes. Thank you, Erica.
Okay, all right. Hi, my name's Erica Landman. I'm sorry, I I missed the beginning portion. So sorry. I was wondering, first of all, if I speak now, can I still speak when it comes before the city council meeting? For a decision? Okay, right. And I I just wanted to point out the average home in the area, my neighborhood, it goes for over six hundred thousand and higher. So it it would not be popular if there were five hundred thousand dollar homes because it would be lowering the price value of the homes in the neighborhood. And I had a question about the containment chambers. I'm sorry, I missed it, but where does the water go once it's collected in the containment chamber? Is it eventually drained somewhere else? Is it like an emergency chamber or something? I I just wanted to know a little bit more about that. Sorry, I'm unfamiliar with it. In my opinion, and multiple neighbors' opinions, thirty homes are way too many for the property at Bonny Cove in general. Bonny Cove has one ingress egress for the neighborhood, and at this time, over one hundred homes are using that. And also, there's been excessive traffic, which I'm happy about, up in the South Hills Wilderness Park by hikers and certain days of the week, there's, I think it's a soccer team or something that goes and it it parks, there's a considerable number of vehicles utilizing Bonny Cove those particular times. And the project has been denied in the past multiple times. I'm wondering why now? Is it okay as opposed to in the past, it was not okay? The original argument was the amount of homes as well as the slope for the hillside ordinance. The that slope was the original foot of the South Hills Wilderness Park. And it was blown up by Caltrans in order to put the two-ten freeway through. So I I don't understand the difference from then to now. I'm not in favor of the project. I know you're just planning. I would love to see a picture or as well as to view if you have the environmental impact report. I would like to see that as well. And where could I find it? Thanks.
Thank you, Erica. Elvia, do we have anyone else?
At this time, no one else has raised their hand to speak during this item.
So I'll close public comment period. And and Jeff, we can answer two of the questions that Ms. Lammon had. The containment chamber, where does the water go? I would imagine it percolates back down into the groundwater.
Yeah, those containment chambers are designed on modern construction to, you know, collect a certain amount of rainwater on site. So rather than, you know, in let's say in mid-century homes where they would have drained directly into the storm drain system, those systems are designed so water running off on the site are contained in a chamber. A portion of it will more or all of hopefully all of it will, you know, go into the ground underneath the development, and it's filtered. There's usually sand or gravel or something that filters the the water that goes into the ground. Up to a certain point, if there's a super, super heavy rain, you know, those chambers will overflow, and then you might get some some runoff into the street. But that's how they're that's how they're designed to function. In terms of the environmental, you know, work this right now, this is just a study session. So this is very conceptual, details like the actual tract map and grading that will be reviewed, have not been submitted in a formal application yet. So there there was a a secret document done for the first project. And so the new project would have to be analyzed in much the same way. However, I would think that a lot of that work can be used and applied to the new project, because the projects are very simple. There's there's not a lot of difference from a secret perspective between the two projects.
Thank you, Jeff. Any final comments from council? No. So without objection, we'll receive and file this item. This brings us to student reports. We have none. And we will have now go into a public comment, a real public comment. So open up a pub public comment period. I would like to invite members of the public to address the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Speaking once on both on and off agenda items. It's your time to speak uninterrupted. Please address your comments to me, the presiding officer. Public comment is limited to thirty minutes. If you'd like to request to speak, select the raise hand icon in Zoom before the close of public comment period. You will then be called on when it's your turn to speak. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments? You're mute.
Yes, we have one person who's raised their hand to speak, but I would like to announce that we received three email correspondence that were received, made part of the record, incorporated into the agenda packet, distributed to council and made available to the public. In addition, we received one additional document received associated with the emails from Mr. Heidelmeyer, original public comment, and will be added to said packet, so that's available to the public. So at this point, we do have one person that's raised their hand to speak, and that's Josina. Hi, Joe. You've got you've got three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Alouin, city council, city staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Josina, Presidentcy of the Glendore Chamber Commerce. As previously mentioned by Mr. Raymond, the state and LA County abruptly opened businesses back up as of yesterday and Friday for restaurants. So you can imagine our phones were pretty much blowing up yesterday knowing or trying to figure out what to do. So even though businesses are starting to open back back up, funding is still a big topic. You know, help for our businesses since a lot of them have been closed for some time. So we continue to push out information on the PPP Part Two and the California State Grant that was released last last month. The first round of that five hundred million dollar grant pool is closed, and businesses are currently being notified if they received a grant or not. For those that do not get it this time, they will automatically go into the second round and do not need to apply again. Before, I haven't heard of any of our local businesses that have received one, but hopefully some of them have or or will be. And again, round two will start eight AM February second and go through six PM February eighth. And 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 again, there's no need to reapply. Looking ahead, the chamber is doing some events. Of course, they're virtual. Every month, we have a first Friday coffee, which this next one on February fifth. Stephen from the city will be talking about first first mile, last last mile, and the survey currently underway. And then on February twelfth, And then on February 12th, the Glendora Chamber and Cal Chamber will be co-hosting Assembly Member Blanca Rubio. Again, February 12th, 1:30 to 2:30 PM. And you can art people that on the chamber site. Also, looking ahead in March, we will be having the State of the City presentation and a separate State of the Schools presentation. The dates are being finalized. I do apologize for not having those yet, but plenty of virtual events seem to be harder than live events. I mean, then we're also, you know, working on a number of workshops, kind of a restaurant week slash cuisines of the foothills and much more. So as usual, it's a pleasure to work with you and our business and residents here in Glendora. And if there are any questions, thank you very much, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Joe. Deputy City Clerk, do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
Eric, I believe, would like to speak. I think you're waving your hand. Okay. Let's see. Go ahead, Erica.
Okay, thank you. My name's Erica Landman. I wanted to let you all know, I was really impressed during the shutdown by the amount of support that the city offered the local businesses and restaurants. And I loved how you thought outside of the box to allow eating in the, you know, on the streets and stuff. And that was very popular with the people. It was a great idea. Thank you for helping and helping those businesses survive during that time period. I wanted to also bring up that the recall news some petitions are doing exceedingly well, and they've almost met the amount of signatures needed. You could, if you need to sign the petitions, most of the restaurants on Glendora Avenue have the recall news some petitions, petitions there as well as the gunslinger gun shop on Grand. And also Spaghetti Eddie's will have some as of tomorrow. So just in case you need to sign it, there's a couple months left. So thank you very much. And thank you for, for being so caring to the businesses in Glendora and thinking of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wishing to speak?
At this point, no other requests have been received to speak.
Thank you, Alvia. At this point, then I'll close the public comment period and bring it to reports and statements. Mendel?
Michael, thank you, and I appreciate the comment that Erica just made, and I want to affirm what she just said and continue to give a shout out to, you know, Joe and all of the incredible work that Michelle and he do. And I just would, would urge each and every one of us to shop and eat here. And as things begin to, you know, open up, let's, let's really give everybody a big, big boost. Rental assistance is going extremely well. Once again, the city has stepped up here, and I believe, and you know, Adam can, you know, help me here, but I think that we've surpassed giving grants of over 200 grand to people who are struggling in paying rent. And there's money left, and so I would encourage those that, that would need this to go to our city's website and take a look at that. And if you think that this, this would help, help you, then please apply. So Adam, am I correct there that we're either close to two or over two?
Yes, sir.
Great. Well, I know that Valerie is doing an incredible job there, and Jeff is assisting her. And once again, it's just the city's way of, of reaching out and, you know, helping those folks during these incredibly hard, hard times. The goal line continues to work and a Baranca is open. And if you haven't been, been by, by there, I would encourage you to go. It's nice and smooth and fixed up and ready to go. And so we are happy that that is occurring. Lastly, I just want to give a, give a shout out to David and his lovely wife. The Frieden dolls have, have, have gone through some, some pretty big pain here as David has lost his father-in-law and his mother-in-law in 11 days. And I just want to express our, you know, affirmation for them, the family and everything that is, is entailed in losing those that we love. And we just pray that you'll, you know, find peace and strength through the days that, that you've experienced and the days that are yet to come. We work hard together, and I just wanted to take, just take a second just to say that we appreciate you both. And we will be thinking about you both during, you know, these, these, these days. So with that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel, for your kind words. We greatly appreciate it. David?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Pardon me. Thank you, Mendel, for those kind words. And yes, it is indeed a great loss when you don't plan for those things. And 64 and a half years of marriage, they, they went together as they could only have done. Not directly COVID-related, but trust me, COVID is real out there. So as a community, I encourage us to all do the best we can to help protect each other and support each other. And thank you to the city staff and to this Chamber of Commerce staff for continuing to support our businesses. Very important, and we hope they are able to reopen and, and charge ahead starting this week. On an exciting note, pleased to announce, many of you know I'm a longtime Boy Scout leader here in town and an Eagle Scout, and I get the great pleasure tonight of announcing that one of our community members, a young man, earned his Eagle Scout rank. It was board of review last week. And I'd like to announce that Eagle Scout Ryan Healy of Scout Troop 491 has accomplished that. He's the son of Greg and Kimberly Healy here of Glendora. And I believe he's got a couple of siblings that are also Eagle Scouts, so he's not the first in the family, but significant nonetheless. Besides being a good character, Ryan's contribution to the community was the restoration of a reading gazebo and surrounding garden areas at Southernland Elementary School. We thank you for that, Ryan, and congratulate you on your success. Ryan does plan to continue his participation as a junior assistant scoutmaster with his Scout Troop, Troop 491 here in Glendora. So our cities, congratulations, my personal congratulations to the Hady family. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Yeah, you know, again, I want to extend our condolences as well to David's family and, but there, you know, there's so many in our community that are struggling right now with the loss of, of, of some during this pandemic. And, you know, we're, we're all fighting that same monster, and our condolences goes out to everybody who are suffering through that right now. And we really are, as a community, saying a lot of prayers for our friends and neighbors. But since the last time we met, we have a new president. President Biden and Vice President Harris had their inauguration last week. And regardless, says to your political affiliation, you know, I, I hope that they have a very successful administration because when they succeed, we all succeed. And we're, we're looking forward to change. And we need some change in our country right now with, we've all been fighting together, a war that was completely unexpected with this pandemic. And, and we're hoping we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with recent developments in the vaccine and everything. And I just think it's important to note that that was a historic event with having our first woman Vice President of the United States. On another note, just to give a bit of a water update, as we've had a couple of water board meetings, our water level in our local key wells fell below the 200-foot mark. And not that it's real significant, but it's nice to see that number being above there. And that's where the water level is at 200 feet above sea level. And that's the water storage that we have that we're all sitting on top of right now. The good news, you know, we got rain coming, and we had rain recently, and hopefully we'll see more of that. But metropolitan water actually has a record amount of storage in local reservoirs based on rain that we've had the last couple of years. So even though it's been sort of a dry winter so far, there's nothing to worry about. We have plenty of water, and we're not going to be seeing any restrictions anytime soon. We also, just to give everybody an update, we've got notice that Congresswoman Judy Chu will be reintroducing her National Recreation Area that does affect us here in Glendora. That's going to be a change to some of the wilderness area that's, that's right above the community of Glendora and most of the foothill communities going down the 605 freeway around the San Gabriel River. So we are going to be seeing that coming back. And unlike in past Congress, more than likely, this will see some light this time around. So pay attention. Make sure your views are heard by the Congresswoman. If you have an opinion on it, don't hesitate to write or email to share your opinions on that. But that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on Councilmember Boyer, that yes, you know, tragically, our nation surpassed the 400,000 mark. So not only across our nation do many families mourn the loss of loved ones, but locally as well. And just to put that in perspective, as I officiate at memorial services, Oakdale is now planning services for April. So just let that soak in a little bit. The impact for the families that have lost loved ones for a variety of reasons, but it's compounded by our current pandemic. But along those lines, Mr. Mayor, it is difficult to single out anyone because there are so many who have lost family members. But tonight, I would like to ask that for two individuals who are representative of the service and commitment that so many of our residents make to our community, that tonight we adjourn our meeting in memory of Michael Garvey and Donna Crowther. And I would like to share just a bit of information about both of them. On December 19th, Michael Garvey died at his home after a long illness. Michael was an entrepreneur, starting several successful businesses over the course of his lifetime, including Zeta Systems, a computer programming company, and Crestwood Communities, a local home builder and development company. Michael had a passion for learning. He also was an avid reader and was rarely without a book, which was quite appropriate because one of the ways in which he contributed to the Glendora community was being there to support his wife Kitty Garvey, as she was an advocate and supporter of our Glendora Library. And while Michael may have been a little bit more shy than Kitty and was a little bit more in the background, not so much sharing the same love for the big social occasions, but he was always there supporting without fail and offering his behind-the-scenes support to so many charities and made many contributions to our community in a variety of ways. He was known for his intellect, his kindness, his sense of humor, and his love of his family. So we offer our sympathy and condolences to the Garvey family. And Donna Crowther died two weeks ago after a brief but valiant battle with cancer. The Crowther family is well-known by their name in the Glendora community for their investment in the community through their service. And throughout the years, as we think of the Crowthers that are named after Lieutenant Tim Crowder. But not only was Donna a partner in serving the community with Tim, but in her own right, she was a fixture in town and an honored matriarch in our community. Donna has not only been an avid supporter and advocate of the Glendora Police Department, but she was also a participant and supporter of numerous community events from school activities to service clubs to fundraisers to lending her time, talent, her resources, and her name to numerous benevolent events. One notable place that she will be missed, when we once again have the Glendora Christmas Parade, she was there always at the corner of Glendora and Foothill with Jamie Caldwell, helping to call the parade. That was just one of the many ways that she was there contributing to Glendora. So we extend our sympathy to the Crowther family and are thankful for the contributions that both Michael and Donna have made and the legacy that is left behind through them to our community.
Thank you, Karen, for your thoughtful comments. At our Council of Governments meeting last week, the, the COG put together a homeless plan that was drafted originally out of the Subcommittee for Homeless at, at the COG. When it came to the General Assembly, we had added some extra components to that. We added addressing mental illness, substance abuse, and adding law enforcement component in the plan that the LA County Supervisors would not allow under the Measure H funding. This is a side note, Wassa, which is dealing with the homeless, was established in 1993. And many of the cities in the San Gabriel Valley are, are quite upset with the progress or lack thereof. And this is the nexus of why this COG had put together this homeless plan. It looks like a very well-thought-out plan, and I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for helping foster this through getting to the General Assembly. The, the Caltrans will be cleaning our 210 freeway on and off ramps starting tomorrow, the 27th. Don't know exactly how long it will take them to clean that, but we've had numerous complaints. I know that Adam has been working with Caltrans, trying to get them to, to come and take care of this. I know that Gary has also been working and concerned with what was happening, trying to put a long-term plan together. As it is right now, I believe it's every six months, they're supposed to clean the on and off ramps. So also, I would also like to add, closing in the memory of Mr. Raymond Monsur. He was a, he's a local insurance agent in town. He passed away this afternoon at 3:00 PM. He leaves behind, at age of 57, he leaves behind his wife Sandy, his three children, Bridgette, Andrew, and Sean. He is a very quiet man, a very nice man, and everyone really thoroughly enjoyed being around this individual. He will sorely be missed and leaving such a young family behind. So with that, this brings us over to reordering the agenda. Does anyone wish to reorder or add to the agenda this time? No, hearing none. Let's get on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless a council member has requested it to be removed for a separate discussion. Does anyone wish to pull or comment any item?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Madam Deputy City Clerk, can you take a roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at this time, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Davis, a second by Councilmember Friedandall. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedandall?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Rep. Tim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alvia. This brings us to unfinished business. Item number six, discuss and provide direction on proposed revisions to the city of Glendora's rules for conducting public meetings, Resolution 07-17. I'll invite our city clerk, Ms. Kathleen Sussman, to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor Alawas. Well, tonight, we're here to present the proposed changes to the city council Resolution 07-17 that regulates how the city council conducts its public meetings. Next slide, please. This slide provides a brief outline This slide provides a brief outline of the steps that have been taken to date. The review of the oral communications as well as the protocols that run public meetings. There have been five city council meetings involved, several staff meetings, which puts us where we are today with presenting you with a red line version of the original resolution for your consideration and input. At this point, I'm not actually asking for a council to adopt the resolution before you. I am here to actually get some clarification and see if there are any additional changes that need to be implemented. We'll go over the next step shortly. Next slide, please. Some of the areas that we considered as we did this review were council directives. As I stated, the council has met on several occasions to discuss this item and conversations have included anywhere from oral communications to processes, governing proceedings, et cetera. So those have been taken into consideration. Another component we looked at was the public meetings regulations and governing proceedings, protocols and inconsistencies within the policy with best practices and with how we are currently conducting our meetings. In addition, there have been multiple discussions between the City Clerk's office, City Attorney's Office and City Manager's Office to try and modify the, modify the procedures in a way that would provide staff with a little bit more flexibility and more productivity. Next slide, please. There's six main areas that we're requesting changes and, and they're highlighted in this slide. Basically, the curfew council's direction was actually to request to eliminate the curfew. Staff is actually requesting that we extend it from 10:30 to 11:00 instead of eliminating it. So we would like to have some direction from council on that matter. Order of Business, I'll have a slide just on that item so, because we'll need a little bit of direction on that as well. Oral communication and public comment. A lot has happened in the last nine months between COVID, going from in-person meetings to, to Zoom meetings. So that area has been updated to allow staff the ability to open up how we receive oral communications and how people participate in these meetings to allow us a little bit more flexibility as we move forward. In addition, it also incorporates new technologies and some best practices. Public meetings, regulations and governing proceedings. The city's current policy outlines components of regulations such as the Brown Act, different government codes, and then government proceedings, it reflects the Roberts Rules of Order. There are two, two different types of government governing proceedings that are normally utilized by cities. One is Roberts Rules, the other is Rosenberg's Rules. And then some cities actually do a mixture of, like an amended version of sometimes both or one or the other. What, one of the things we'll be requesting is that instead of outlining those procedures in our policy, we want to adapt, adopt the Brown Act and the Rules of Order so that as they are updated, the city and the council and all their public meetings will be inconsistent with state, state and normally federal mandates. In addition to that, we're requesting that we, the position of parliamentarian be designated. Public Hearing Section was updated to outline new proceedings and to lock down how the, the process of receiving testimony is conducted throughout city boards and then to address changes in disruptive or off-topic comments. Next slide. Order of Business. So we have quite a few changes that staff is requesting. And from conversations I've already heard, I know there are some changes that are going to be requested as well. So one of the things we wanted to do is look at, provide moving closed session from the end of the meeting to the beginning of the meeting. In addition, there are two areas that we want to add. The first one would be to add a City Manager and City Attorney Statements section to the agenda. This would allow for announcements and updates from the City Manager and City Attorney that need to be provided to have, have a place in the agenda for those to be heard. The, where they, where they fell before was the end of the meeting and in a lot of ways, they would get lost in that process. So we are requesting that they have their own section and then it be moved to follow council's statements, which is a basic rewording of what used to be your council reports. Reordering and public comment, we are asking that the public comment be moved down in the agenda so that it happens before all and any action items that will be heard before council or commission. One of the things we're trying to do is develop consistency across the board from city council meetings to commission meetings and so on. Public hearings will still be relatively in the same area. Consent calendar, really nothing has changed. Those are normally items that are, don't require discussion, they're non-controversial, they're regulatory minutes, warrants and demands, investment reports, updates. Those tend to be placed under consent calendar. They can be approved with one motion or pulled for comment or a separate discussion. Council Agenda Items, we're also requesting a new section be added to the agenda to encompass those items that have been requested and seconded by a council member to be placed on the agenda. We're recommending that happen right after consent calendar. And then, of course, we have the unfinished business section as well as new business. With the additional sections added, we are recommending that the council and staff items be eliminated. And then we'd have the final section for adjournment. So if, if council would like to provide comment on changes they want, we can do that with this showing, but I'd like to actually do, go through a brief next steps before we start tearing this apart. Next slide, please. So the next, the next steps are to direct the city, direct us to actually go back, finalize a report and bring back a resolution as we presented it to you tonight for council consideration if there are no additional changes. If there are changes, I'm requesting that you provide direction to staff on those further changes so I could incorporate them into the resolution and bring them back for council consideration. In, in addition to that, one of the discussion items that came up that we need clarification on from, from council is the start time of council meetings. In some discussions, if councils, council meetings are currently done with a special meeting, normally done at five or six for closed session or interviews, special items like that. And then the regular meeting starts at seven. If there is a desire by council to combine the special and the regular meeting onto a single agenda, the municipal code would need to be amended to change the start time of that meeting and to spell out what, what the special meeting or what the closed session component would look like as well as when the public hearing component would start. For clarification, so that when we do our public hearing notices, those are meeting our noticing requirements. So with that, I am ready with pen and paper to start marking and taking any comments and considerations or changes that you guys are ready to throw at me.
Eric, if I just may add, just, just really briefly, thanks to Kathleen and Bill for going through two years' worth of data and feedback from council and bearing viewpoints, trying to take into consideration the lessons we've learned. So as Kathleen mentioned, really interested in feedback and we'll be back before you in February with any final changes for adoption.
Thank you, Adam and Kathleen. Kathleen, you have a brand new pen to start writing?
Already.
Okay. You're not going to need it. All right.
So, so Mr. Mayor, can I just add one other thing?
Sure.
The most significant change in my opinion to the draft resolution is that it has now become an omnibus resolution. That is to say, it will govern the conduct of all meetings of all legislative bodies in the city. So you'll see many more generic terms in the resolution than existed in the existing resolution because as I understand it, there has been some confusion about how other legislative bodies should be conducting their meetings. And so there was a desire on the part of the city clerk and the city staff to come up with an omnibus scheduling of meeting protocols. And so the revised resolution deals more in generic terms rather than in specific terms, except as applied to public hearings. So far as I am aware, there are only three of your legislative bodies that are authorized to hold quasi-adjudicatory public hearings. That is the Planning Commission, the Water Commission and the City Council. So that portion of the revised resolution deals specifically with those three legislative bodies. Beyond that, almost everything else is generic and would apply to any legislative body of the city.
Thank you, Bill. Mendel?
Michael, thank you. And I just want everybody to know that Kathleen and David and Adam and I talked about this during our briefing time this morning at 7:15. So I will try to repeat as quickly as I can the same things that I said then. I am looking at the red line addition and this really hooks on to what was the last point and that is the, the way the agenda is put together. I fully support having one agenda with the closed session or special session, whatever we, we want to call that name first. I've been a, you know, advocate that that should happen. And I believe that the council did take action a couple of months ago to endorse us doing, doing that. And whether it starts at five or six, that's dependent upon the agenda or the items. But I would certainly like us to do that because I believe that we do our best work when it's early, not late. And usually those things are important. And so I would hope that we could follow through with what has been shown to us in Kathleen's last slide and do, do that. But articulate that the session can start at five or six or whenever it needs to with the, with the normal time being seven o'clock. I also want to make a comment and advocate on item, Article One, Number S. I believe that 10:30 is more than sufficient to get our business done. There will be exceptions. I'm aware of that. Been on the council for enough years to know that. But I think with, with the effort to be efficient and with the, the way that we receive, you know, the data, reports, the briefings, we need to make sure that the briefings are done in a very efficient way. I really don't see that we need to extend things out to 11 o'clock. I don't believe that, that we do very good work much after 10. And I believe that if we commit to briefings being good, reading information, taking the time to get all of the facts prior to our council time, that we can certainly get done by 10 or 10:30. So I would encourage us to stick with the current time of 10:30 as opposed to going to 11, short of exceptions. And I know that there can be those, but I would not want to support that. On item, Article One, Number T, efficiency is something that this morning was stressed. And I do believe that we have a quarterly time where we recognize the good deeds of citizens and of civic groups and service clubs and all of those things. And I would encourage us to push as many of those things to those quarterly events as we possibly can. Now, I understand that timing is, you know, everything. And if a significant event occurs in April and we don't meet until the end of June, it's going to be a little weird to recognize what we should have said in April and June. But I think that for the most part, we can push a lot of those things to our quarterly events and make the council time a more efficient time. So I would hope that we would entertain that. Lastly, on Article Two on the agenda, I, I, I would like us to consider flipping numbers five and eight. So make five, eight, and make eight, five. And I just think that it would be a better way of doing it. The flow would flow in a manner that I think is consistent with what we are doing, doing now. And those are the thoughts that I think I shared at 7:15. I'm not sure. I don't know that I was awake as much as I am now. But I think that that's, that those were the items that I, that I shared and would offer those up to everybody to think about. With that, thank you.
I know, Mendel. We're after nine o'clock already, so that could be debatable.
That's true. Well, yeah, you're right.
Mayor, if you don't mind, do you mind if Kathleen's going to write feverishly if we ask a couple of court?
Sure, go for it.
Question. So, so Councilman, just to make sure on the order of the agenda, just to provide some clarity and, and I too, maybe at 7:15, was a little bit asleep this morning. Reordering of the agenda, one of the reasons why we wanted that before public comment was to allow the City Council the opportunity to pull any item forward should there be a large gathering of the public to speak on one item. Similar tonight with Bonnie Cove, the mayor called for us a public comment without opposition from the council to take that first to address one of those nuanced items. So just for background, that's why we proposed reordering of the agenda higher up before public comment to, to allow the council some flexibility to maybe entertain a large portion of groups that may show up to city council and address their issues first. And then item of clarification on the start time. And Bill, I think we may need some of your, your legal expertise here. If, if we move forward, so the, the, the idea with potentially having an earlier start time in the agenda is to staff publishes one agenda, which is more common in cities instead of two. Because our municipal code requires a city council meeting to start at seven and historically, closed session is at the end of a meeting, we would have to amend the municipal code to have a city council meeting start time earlier. Bill, my question for you is if we have an earlier start time and there's no closed session in the municipal code, will we have to start the city council meeting at that earlier start time?
Well, yes, you'd convene it and then you could recess it until a later hour. But yeah, you would have to start it. I mean, the government code says you have to have a date and time for your city council meetings, actually for all your legislative body meetings. And you could, you could start, you could reorder the agenda slightly by calling the meeting to order. No, actually, that would still work. No, actually, that would still work. At six o'clock, you would go into closed session. If there were no closed sessions, then all you'd need would be for the city clerk to to come out or to come on to Zoom and indicate there's no closed session and the council meeting will be in recess until seven o'clock. But yes, you would.
I say, I think Cavina does that way.
Yeah, lots of cities do it that way.
From a staff perspective, staff's okay starting a regular meeting earlier, you know, just for the council consideration. There are two trains of thought. It used to be that council meetings used to start at two and three in the afternoon, and then people said they couldn't make the meetings. So city council meetings started to start at seven, and then they went too late. And people would complain that they never got to see the end of a council meeting because they were up too late. A lot of which is to say it's it's what meets the needs of each organization best. So Councilman Thompson, I believe your request is to look at amending the municipal code to have an earlier start time. If we have closed session, great. And if we need to amend it for even earlier in those exceptions, we would then have a special meeting to have closed session at an earlier time. But you're okay with a city council meeting starting at 6:00 PM if there was no closed session instead of seven. Would that be fair?
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for the group. So when they had, so when all of you have comments and direction for council, we're all on the same page. So appreciate that clarification, Councilman.
Good.
You could also, I would add, Mayor and Council, you could also, under Article Two of the proposed revisions to the ordinance, indicate a start time at six o'clock parenthetically if there are closed session agenda items. If not, the council will be in recess until seven o'clock. You could do that.
Yeah, you know, I like that. Yeah.
That way, the council doesn't have to notice us. I think the concern from staff's perspective is we're routinely noticing two council meetings, a special council meeting just for closed session. Technically, we should come out of that special council meeting, report out on closed session and adjourn that meeting, and then convene another meeting. And I think staff's desire is, let's just convene one meeting. But what do we do if that one meeting, starting at six o'clock, has no business to conduct that would take the council into closed session? We want the meetings to start late enough that members of the public are home from work, although right now, we're all home from work all the time, can can get home, eat dinner, and participate in our council meeting starting at seven. So I think you could amend the municipal code to have a six o'clock start time with a notation in the amendment that in the event there is no closed session scheduled for six o'clock, the council meeting will resume at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Bill. I think we're gonna have some debate on that item. David?
Yeah, thank you. I'll I'll jump on that one while it's warm. Does that mean that somebody would have to officially start a meeting saying, we're adjourned for an hour and then come back?
No, we wouldn't. We wouldn't be adjourned. Adjourned means the meeting's over. We would have the city clerk convene the council meeting and then put it into recess until seven o'clock.
So you would have to have bodies present to commence the first part of the meeting, correct?
Just one.
Just one?
Right, just the city clerk.
That could work. All right. I think going back to the order of business that we've alluded to a bit, I think it's very important that while we're ordering the agenda as early in the process for the reasons you stated, I think that the public comments should precede the member comments because quite often we can address that or a public comment deserves much as it did tonight, deserves some response or some addressment so that we can answer some of the questions that came up. If we don't, that was the five and eight flip that Mendel has alluded to. If we don't do that, then we need to be prepared after public comment to allow staff or some maybe board members to have a response.
But David, that's where the mayor, that's where the mayor or the chair can address that after the close of public comment.
So so members of the council, typically, we would counsel you not to respond to oral communications except in unusual circumstances. Oral communications are there for you to listen to. If there is something that warrants a response, as the mayor said, the presiding officer of that legislative body could say to a particular staff member, do you have a response to this question or this concern? I think we want to be careful not to use oral comments and and city council comments to turn into a debating session where a member of the public says X and the council member in response says no. We're there to listen to the public. We will engage with the public where warranted and will typically leave that to the chair of the meeting, in this case, the mayor, to invite a response and to request a specific staff member to respond. That would be my observation.
Okay, that I can do that. I just don't want to lose that opportunity for the chair to be able to solicit a response in a moving opportunity.
And the other thing that I need to add to that is oral communications may involve subjects that aren't on a council agenda that the response would be, put this on the next council agenda rather than responding to it or directing staff to provide a response rather than responding on the spot. So we have some Brown Act implications to responding to oral communications too. Although in the past, I've not seen anything that was a problem.
Understood. All right. Those are my only thoughts, just to not lose that opportunity to attempt that communication. Other than that, I concur with the presentation.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Yeah, I gotta say, I agree as well. I would like to see our statements come after public comment for a variety of different reasons. You know, I can live with it this way if that's a decision of the council, but I would prefer it to be after public comment. I would also, I noticed that we're removing the council and staff items at the end of the meeting. I think it'd be good to have something there, whether we call it, you know, whatever we want to call it, just closing comments. Because sometimes there's things during the meeting that needs to be addressed. And sometimes there's things that need to be said that we really don't want to drag on at the beginning of the meeting. It just may be a short comment, but that you remember toward the end of the meeting. So I would like to see that opportunity at the end of the meeting. The couple of other things in Rosenberg's rules, there's there's a couple of different voting options that could be made available. And I guess my question is, do we need to make that decision and make that part of our ordinance as far as whether to use the the present voting option or present and voting voting option? Because that could very well change the outcome of decisions that we make. And I don't know if anybody read that. To be honest, I didn't catch that until today. Or I would have brought it up earlier, but you know, if we could address that. And then the last thing is, it also talks about, and in our sample ordinance during public comment, it notes that the speaker shall state their name when they go to make public comment. My understanding was that we cannot require speakers to give their name when they appear in public comment. So Bill, I don't know if.
Yeah. So so to answer your second statement first, you're correct. We cannot require people to state their name. We invite them to. We invite them to give us an address so that we've got a clear record of who spoke, but we cannot require it. I agree with that. With respect to Rosenberg's rules, that's really at the pleasure of the council. You can decide how you want to do it. I think the whole purpose of Rosenberg's rules is to relax and to simplify parliamentary procedures with with all due respect to this council. You really don't follow Roberts' Rules of Order right now. You're really closer to Rosenberg's rules or some unique variation of it. It works in this town and it works for me. But but if I were a strictly parliamentarian, I would be pulling what's left of my hair out as we go through this process. The only thing that I am really concerned about are public hearings because they are creating evidentiary records. But for the most part, I think the more relaxed procedures that you follow for taking actions are perfectly legal, perfectly appropriate, which is why I suggested that you consider Rosenberg's rules as you have adapted them here in Glendora. So I'm your your first question, Councilmember Boyer, is entirely a council prerogative.
But my question is, would would that be something that we need to make a decision on now? Or would that, okay, so?
No, so you have those options under Rosenberg rules. We're proposing that you adopt those rules. And you can move forward on a case by case basis in any individual council meeting.
So I guess my question would be, because again, I could see the the different voting rules becoming an issue. If if there were a contentious item, we may have somebody that chooses to abstain from voting. So how would we make the decision as to which set of rules to follow?
So the all parliamentary procedural rules, be they Robert rules or Rosenberg rules, have superimposed upon them state law. And the general rule in state law is unless you provide by ordinance to the contrary, and some of our client cities have done that, an abstention is deemed to be a consent to where the majority of the council is voting. So if the majority of the count, if the vote were to be two to one in favor of a motion with two abstentions, the two abstentions would be considered votes in favor of the two voting for the motion. If it were one to two with two abstentions, those two abstentions would be considered nay votes. In some cities, and in one of the cities that I've been the city attorney in for years, they actually have a council ordinance that says an abstention shall be deemed a no vote for purposes of determining whether a motion gets passed or not passed. So that you can never have a two-two with one abstention, meaning no action could be taken. So that's 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 up to the council. The rule of law that exists absent council action is that an abstention is deemed to be consent to go along with how the majority of the remaining voters have voted. Unless it's a two to two, in which case an abstention prevents the making of a decision.
Which is essentially a no.
Well, it could be a yes because the, well, that's true. Effectively, it's, well, no, it's not a no vote because it prevents the making of a decision. And the failure to make a decision leaves the item still on the agenda open for further motions. So it wouldn't conclude the item. So it has the effect of preventing a decision, but it doesn't have the effect of concluding council consideration of the agenda item. So if you were to have a two-two, one abstention vote, then you would say the motion, whatever it was, did not pass. Are there new motions?
I think, though, I think Bill's for his parliamentarian rule he passed.
So I guess my question is, that's not something that we need to adopt into a new resolution?
Well, let us take a look at that. If that's a concern, I appreciate raising that. And let me talk with the city manager and the city clerk and see if of those options in Rosenberg's, we feel comfortable making a recommendation in the final resolution.
Okay. Yeah, those are the only comments that I had. But actually, as far as the length of the meeting, I agree with Mendel. I think 10:30 is plenty late enough. And if we push for that time and we have to extend it a little bit, go to 11, you know, we're okay. If we move this back to 11 o'clock and then we go extending it much past that, not a lot of good decisions are made at midnight, so.
What if what if we did an analysis of how late your meetings have typically gone? And if we could demonstrate to you that they typically go to 11, would you be willing to reconsider your position?
No. Because that's just the point. We need to be more efficient. And we should be more efficient with everything we have now. Don't make things worse.
Well, council members weren't buttoning in all the time. We get done.
We should be done now.
Just, okay, just my two bits. I'm done. Thanks.
If I can, if I, we've heard from three council members who have discussed the order of the agenda. Can I get a nodding of the heads if the general consensus or the intention of those three council members who spoke was that Item Seven and Eight would become Items Five and Six? And Items Five and Six would become Items Seven and Eight? Is that what we've?
Why don't we finish with the rest of everybody, instead of trying to figure out?
We just wanted to make sure what we heard from those three.
Karen?
Well, and I agree with the summary that Mr. Raymond just gave on the other three. That that rearrangement, I would concur with. And the emphatic response that Mr. Thompson made to the curfew time would be the same emphatic response that I hope we would get on votes. So anything that allows an abstention to be a way out of voting, I would want to make sure that we close that loophole. And I thank Mr. Boyer for pointing that out. I don't want abstentions to be a way that people can avoid making a decision. So that would be my recommendation going forward on that. And just one other question. Once upon a time, I believe maybe it was 2006, 2007, there was an individual who was going to cities and talking about lawsuits because of invocations. So at that time, we moved the invocation before the call to order so that we could say that it was outside the realm of business. And I don't know if that still needs to be a consideration. So I asked Mr. Wonder, where did he go? Lost him on the screen there.
He's not in our meeting anymore.
I think he might have accidentally gotten cut off. Lost the connection somehow.
He didn't like me about talking about closing the loophole and so he left.
Passed his curfew.
Yeah. So anyway, I just throw out that question about the invocation, if that's still an issue or not.
There are generally rules surrounding in court case language about what you can say in invocation, not 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 its allowance. I'll let Bill opine on that further and we'll make sure we raise it when he comes back in.
Okay, so that was it. The other questions I was gonna ask have already been brought in.
Thank you, Karen. So I'm okay either way with the curfew from the simple standpoint of it's 10:30 right now as it is. And we can vote to extend it. I'd rather just keep it right where it's at and just extend if we need to. Because typically, if you do extend it, you're just gonna, Adam, you're just gonna pile more stuff on us. So make it longer. Or not.
What's last call at the ice cream store?
It's not the establishment I was thinking of at the end.
La 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 la. So I'm fine with whatever you do. 10:30 is fine because we can always maneuver that. It's still in that, the language is still in there that by a majority vote, we can extend it if we need to, whether it's 11 or 10:30. So I'm agnostic to that. I prefer to have the two separate agendas for the simple fact that it keeps it simple. And sometimes our closed sessions are longer than others. Some we've had at four o'clock, some at three, five. And to have the city clerk's office come back. And to have the city clerk's office come back and have to have to make an announcement or something of that nature, I think that could be problematic. And and if we simply miss one or we and someone's supposed to do something they don't, then that can bring up a whole host of problems. And top of that, it can lead to quite a bit of confusion to the folks out there anticipating when a certain start date is going to be or start time. So I'd rather it just be in two separate ones, the way we currently have it now. Member statements need to include the word reports and not just member statements because we are supposed to report out of our assignments on the outside, and I believe that we need to actually say reports. That's my two cents on that one. Also, I agree with with Gary to leave the the council and and staff items at the end because there are some things as a catchall that we like to go ahead and have a statement. And and based on things that have said earlier in the meeting, the statements and reports after public comment is something I also believe should happen. So those might be along the same lines, Adam, as what you were trying to articulate before I interrupted you. But I wanted to make sure that all of us had an opportunity to say what we need to say before you start writing things and it may change.
Mayor, would you be amenable, just to avoid confusion of having saying council and staff again, would you be amenable to closing comments? And then we can amend the resolution to state that closing comments includes statements by the city council and city staff?
Absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you.
So does anyone else have anything to add on this? Gary, looks like you want to say something.
Yeah, actually, I I just wanted you. You you made the comment about, you know, having the clerk. This might cause some confusion. Kathleen, you know, I guess, you know, your your opinion on this could be helpful. Is it an issue? Would it be an issue to have you open the agenda or open the meeting and recess it? Is there a preference one way or the other from from the city clerk's office?
I'm not talking about necessarily just from the city clerk. I'm talking about the folks that are waiting for a meeting to happen.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And then on top of that, could be some confusions in the city clerk's office as well. I think we're complicating something that's quite simple.
I I would what what staff is trying to try to address, it is not common practice to have special meetings that are closed sessions. That is not a standard practice.
To have special meetings, what?
That are closed sessions.
Okay.
That's.
And and I would add it adds additional administrative burden. It may not be a huge administrative burden, but now we have to notice two meetings. And we have two meeting noticing deadlines and we have to prepare two agendas and you know, it's it is it the end of the world? It's not the end of the world. But as the city manager said, it's not typical. But that's up to the council.
I just believe it complicates things a little bit more and there's an expectation by the viewing public. And the question I still have, though, too, is is that how can the city clerk put us into recess? Legally?
The city clerk goes on the air and says, there is no closed session tonight, so the city council meeting will be in recess until seven P M.
And that's allowable without a quorum?
Yeah, if there's not a quorum of the council there, I have the authority to do that.
Do you mind? Do you mind answering the comment from Gary just about administrative burden? I mean, I know staffs here during those times and running around depending on the council meetings or not, so.
Um, it is additional work. It's not any. It's not crazy additional work. I do. I do agree that sometimes there is can there is confusion about having the two meetings from a public standpoint. So a lot of times, because most other cities don't have the same format we do, there's a confusion from the honestly, there's a confusion from public and even some staff on the purpose of a special meeting and how that's held. Now, I I would ask Bill. I've seen it where actually the codes for cities actually spell out that like closed session will be conducted between five and seven. And then the seven o'clock hour will start these components to address like the public hearing component. Because theoretically, we're gonna we would continue to notice our public hearings for seven o'clock and legally, we're supposed to try and make those hearings happen as close to seven as possible.
Ah, I I've seen it done that way. The bottom line is you can always start anything late. You just can't start it early, including public hearings. So, you know, I I I think it's I think each city has its cultural norms, its way of comfortably doing business. We're suggesting a slight revision to that. But there's no magic to what we're suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, the special meetings give us more flexibility on when we start. And and that has been helpful, depending on what your discussions have been.
And simply an issue for council consideration and we'll move forward however the council decides.
Right.
So how about the consideration if we get to go back live one day and we have the physical chambers? It loads, it has to be unloaded or monitored, somebody to watch it? Is that a?
That's really no different than what we would do if we held a special meeting first, we'd come in, we'd convene, we'd go into closed session. The chamber would be empty. Doors would be open. The public can come and go as they deem appropriate. I assume we have some security.
Yeah, we wouldn't change how we would physically do a meeting.
Right.
Still visual visually, it would look the same.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was looking up the city of Covina because that was the example I cited because I know I've gone there for different activities. And the way they listed on their website is that when they have closed session, it will begin at six thirty. If there's no closed session, council meetings begin at seven thirty. And then they also state at some times they have special or you know, other additional meetings at various times, but it's just listed that way for the public. So then you just have one thing and it makes you be more efficient. You get that closed session done at six thirty and go on to seven thirty.
You wish. So um.
Yeah, six thirty is a pretty late for a closed session.
I don't mean that time, but I'm just saying they say if we have closed session, we start at X time. If it's a council meeting, it starts at this time and that way you're not, you know, to to the mayor's point that what will the public know? You just say that upfront. And then the city clerk doesn't have to always be noticing a special meeting because it's just there saying if you have closed session, it's at this time, but.
So so Kathleen and Adam, if we put this all into one agenda, what would you would you would you want to start a closed session if we had a closed session? Was it going to be a stagnant time? Or would it be flexible based on what's on the agenda?
No, it would have to be a set time to start.
Most closed sessions at six o'clock, when we went back and looked, have been acceptable. We've had a couple items in the past six months that have been a little more extensive where we've asked to start closed session earlier. If we had one of those issues, we would, again, schedule a special meeting for a closed session with an earlier start time.
So we still would have that ability then?
Yeah.
You you have the ability to call a special meeting on twenty four hours' notice, seven days a week.
Right.
Right, but what if we just had a special a regular closed session that was going to go beyond the one hour?
Well, okay, so if you if you scheduled your meetings to start at six o'clock and borrowing what the mayor pro tem was saying, the ordinance would be amended to say the meetings will start at six o'clock if there is a closed session at seven o'clock if there are no closed sessions. If you started your closed session at six o'clock and at seven thirty, you're still in closed session, you're in good shape. You just start your council meeting late. The public may not love you for it, but you haven't done anything unlawful.
All right.
Again, you can always start meetings late. You just can't start them early.
So Adam and Kathleen, do we have a consensus from all the things we've been talking about? It seems like we we pretty much do. Can you want to read them back if you have the notes?
Uh, I'll try to do my best and Kathleen can yell at me if I'm wrong. Fair?
Fair.
So we're going to move items five and six to items and make them seven and eight. Items seven and eight will become items five and six. I'm going to assume council will be okay if we change council member statements to council member reports and statements. If that's fair. Looks like we would add item fifteen would be closing comment or closing comments, which would make the adjourned item sixteen in that regard, and that would cover the changes there. We will clarify items on public comment as the name under public participation. We will make commentary there on the resolution to ensure that people know that even with Rosenberg's rules that the prevailing is you may provide your name, not shall, just to provide that clarification under public comment. And then there is one outstanding question, Mayor, the mayor pro tem asked the city attorney before we had a technical issues. If invocations, there there was a past issue where someone was suing cities for invocation prior to the start of a meeting and just wanted to validate that invocations are still a legally allowable part of a city council meeting.
Absolutely. And there'd be one other thing that I would add to that. We'll amend the municipal code to provide that council meetings will start at six o'clock if there are closed sessions and at seven o'clock if there are no closed session.
If the council chooses to go the special meeting route, nothing changes.
I don't think I don't think we'd need to do that. I think I think the mayor pro tem offered a really good suggestion. We'd amend the municipal code to give two start times, depending on whether there are closed sessions or whether there are not closed sessions.
And we also have to codify, we're going to leave the 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 curfew at ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
Right. And then we're going to collect data as to how many times you violate the curfew.
And then the only other two items was we're going to get clarification on the voting as it relates to.
Oh, yeah.
And then we will also, if there's a consensus from the council on the community recognition.
Right.
So then we it looks like we have a bit of a consensus. So do we want to to table this instead of voting on something tonight? Does table us to a date certain?
This there's actually, we're not asking for we're asking for direction and then we will come back in February with a final approval.
Okay, so no other further action from us at this point?
We're also asking that you amend the strategic plan to include this item that we forgot to include on the strategic plan.
Thank you. I forgot about that one.
Kathleen, do you mind reading the proposed motions from the council?
Sure. So what we had requested is basically to direct staff to schedule the adoption of the resolution as presented. After this discussion, there are several changes that need to be incorporated. So we will, if council can make a motion to provide direction to staff outlining for the changes that want need to be incorporated so that it can be brought back for council consideration at the February twenty 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 one meeting, not twenty twenty. And then direct staff to amend the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty three three year strategic plan to add item forty six EMO changes to rules of conducting public meetings.
So let me let me ask a quick question. Why are we adding the forty six EMO at the moment right now when we've not codified what we talked about this evening?
Because we haven't even added it as an action item.
Because it's not even listed on the strategic plan. We accidentally left it off.
So we need to add this even though we've not finalized it?
Well, because the 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 listing it on the strategic plan makes it the action you wanted to that. The the reason we moved forward with this was from the meetings that were held in the strategic plan. This was one of the strategic plan items.
So you've added it as a task to be completed and we are starting the process of completing that task tonight.
Correct.
And we'll hopefully complete the tax, the task with your approval at the next council meeting or at the.
We just inadvertently left it off the list of tasks to do on the strategic plan.
So I request a motion from council to move.
I think you can just move Kathleen's recommendation.
That's what I was about to do. Ask the council if they want to move the recommendations from staff from council.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Want to take a roll call vote, Alvia?
Yes, so the motion was from Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Thompson. I'm going to take a roll call vote. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Friedandall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And that passes by zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvia. This brings us to item number seven, new business, a resolution adopting Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority complete street resolution for Los Angeles County jurisdiction. I'd like to invite Superintendent Mr. Steve Matier to present the report.
You're on mute.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. My name is Stephen Matier. I'm the transportation manager in the city of Glendora. The item before you is a complete streets resolution requested by L A Metro to assist us with securing grant funds and to help guide in the update of any future circulation element. Next slide, please. First, what are complete streets? It is a philosophy of balancing a roadway network, considering all users, you know, all abilities and context sensitive design. So looking at a street and not thinking, well, it has to be this one way or another or have, you know, every street has to have a bike lane. It's looking at what does the overall street network do? What is its purpose? And how do we have the right design for the right street in the right place? Next slide, please. As I noted, too, this is a resolution Metro has requested for us and I wanted to I'm not going to read all the bullets here. There's quite a bit. This is all the elements in our current circulation element that are supporting complete streets policies. And the reason why Metro asked for this resolution is that the date of our circulation element is a little bit dated relative to their policy. And they also wanted some clarity and uniformity with regard to our complete streets position. But I wanted to point out, though, again, that this is something the city has already been doing and doesn't fundamentally change our approach to how we plan our transportation network in the city. Next slide, please. And so I meant mentioned is the reason why we're doing this is that Metro has a complete streets policy six point two, which requires jurisdictions to have a defined complete streets policy, a circulation element with a complete street section or a resolution, which tonight we're considering the resolution. This, again, ensures eligibility and points in the metro grant program. It supports our future grant applications. A lot of times the state or the federal government or even Metro will ask us, do we have a have such a policy in place? Now we can say that we do pending adoption tonight. And it reaffirms again the position and the approach the city already takes to our streets. Next slide, please. And so this is the recommendation is to adopt the resolution for the complete streets. And I can take any questions the council has.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Mendel?
No, I support it.
Thank you. David?
No questions. Thank you, Stephen.
Gary?
No questions.
Karen?
No, thank you, Stephen.
All right, I Stephen, I've got two questions. What exactly is is it meant by equitable and safe streets in the report?
Sure. So equitable means that we consider all users and this kind of ties into the safety aspect of it, right? You know, looking at, do we have ADA compliance at all of our streets? Are we meeting all of the, you know, general base requirements for a street? I'll give an example of, you know, Lorraine repaved it, you know, the city installed the continental crosswalks that you saw. And those are the kind of complete streets approaches that the city is already doing. And so that's makes the city much more equitable, makes our roads safer for, you know, someone who's in a wheelchair, who's visually impaired for drivers and for everyone, you know, who's navigating through the city.
All right, and if we don't adopt this, we run the risk of losing future grant opportunities, correct?
Yeah, we talked to Metro a couple of times about this, whether or not we actually needed this, and they suggested that we do, as mentioned, for uniformity. That's an easy box to check when they evaluate our grant applications. And yes, you know, a lot of times they will look at this and if we can point to a clear policy that does help us with these grant applications.
Thank you, Stephen. Request a motion from the floor?
So.
So moved.
Second.
Alvia, want to take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've got a motion from council member Friedandall, a second by mayor pro tem Davis. I'm going to take a roll call vote, council member Thompson.
Yes.
Council member Boyer.
Yes.
Council member Friedandall.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas.
Yes.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvia. This brings item number eight, authorize a purchase of two twenty twenty Braun uh, Intervans Class D replacement vehicles from Creative Bus Sales Chino, California. Uh, strategic plan item fifty-four dash IMCIF. I'd like to invite Superintendent Stephen Matier again to present a report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council, and uh, spirit of brevity, I'll, I'll get through this pretty quickly. Um, so the item before you is to purchase two of the four vehicles that we awarded under the section fifty-three ten grant. Um, next slide please. Um, as I noted, the city was awarded through over, I'm sorry, over three hundred thousand dollars from Metro under the section fifty-three ten grant, which funds dollar ride, capital and operations. Um, we receive funding for replacement of four of our vehicles as well as new dispatching software. Um, next slide please. Uh, this is the vehicle that we're purchasing. It's a twenty twenty Braun Intervan, so uh, it's a, a minivan that we currently have. Um, this is the latest model and also has what's called a simple stow ramp. Uh, currently we have this mechanical ramp that comes down. They are prone to breaking and obviously uh, they're very heavy. This is a much simpler option and it was available in this model. So that's why we wanted to jump on um, this purchase. Uh, we're also including a new camera system, which will help um, in case there's a collision with one of our vehicles. Um, it has slightly higher capacity than current of minivans that we have. Um, anticipating taking delivery later this spring, um, a vehicle pending approval tonight. Um, next slide please. Uh, this is the, the funding plan is noted, the grant covers ninety percent of the purchase and it's a ten percent match with the city. Um, so this comes out of uh, funds that we, we budget every year for vehicle acquisitions and a little over eleven thousand dollars. Um, the total purchase cost for both these vehicles is a little, almost, you know, one hundred, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, again, this is to replace uh, existing vehicles that we have. And next slide please. And this is the item before you is to approve the purchase of these two vehicles from Creative Bus Sales. And I can take any questions the council has.
Thank you, Stephen. Mendel?
Nope. Excellent job, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
Uh, two quick questions. One, I'm assuming these are gasoline powered?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and the, the flavor is Dodge is, is, is that the uh, preferred thing? And the expert piece from our mechanics and serviceability and things that versus somebody else's flavor or?
Yeah, I mean, with these transit vehicles, especially ones that are ADA compliant, there's only certain models, I guess, that that can support the conversion and Dodge is typically one of the platforms that are used. Um, luckily with our contract, our maintenance, um, our, our operations provider covers our maintenance costs as well. Um, and Creative Bus Sales has sold us buses in the past and they have a great maintenance team. So this is a very uh, a model they're very familiar with and are easy, they're very, you know, straightforward to repair when we've had issues.
Okay, thank you. No other questions.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Um, uh, speaking of the, the, where we're buying them, I mean, was, was there an option to buy them locally? Could anybody here in Glendora provide similar vehicles? Do you know?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, so to my knowledge, there are no local vendors in Glendora that sell um, you know, ADA compliant vehicles. We, if we were a byline, we would buy a, you know, shell essentially, send it off to get converted and buy it back. Um, which runs the risk of being more expensive and it's a lot more oversight than I think we have the ability to use. The, the good thing is that when we buy these, we buy these from the cooperative. It's the Cal Act, which is a association of small operators throughout the state. Um, that helps us get a uniform bid package and a, you know, more, more transparent pricing with these vehicles.
Okay, and then um, you know, with, with the government's mandate to require that all passenger vehicles be um, uh, zero emission by two thousand thirty-five, wh- where, where does stuff like this fall into that? Do you know?
Yeah, um, excuse me, that rule falls under vehicles that are over, I believe, um, I want to say fourteen thousand gross vehicle. I could be off by that, but it essentially applies to the higher capacity vehicles. So um, minivans or even up to the Ford Transit vehicles aren't really subject to that rule. Um, what this is really targeting are the larger, you know, thirty, forty foot buses. Um, our cutaways that we operate um, are subject to the, the clean transit rule that you're mentioning.
Oh, okay, now that, that's for the public transit, but in general with the elimination of um, the, the purchase of combustible engine passenger vehicles. Do, do you know if these will fall into that play? And again, we're fifteen miles or fifteen years away, but I'm just wondering if that is something we're going to need to consider in future purchases.
Um, that's a great question. That's something we can look into. I know um, a lot of the vendors now are moving towards electric options for not just the larger vehicles, but also for, um, you know, the ADA vans. And that can be something we, we look at doing um, for the future replacements that we have to go through. Because I agree, I think it's a, a very noble goal um, for us to have. And I think there's a lot of real cost savings too um, with electric operation over the long term.
And then I know you, you've been looking into electric vehicles. Has there been any research into um, hydrogen fuel cell yet? The, the, the infrastructure for battery powered electric is really questionable as to whether we're going to be able to have that in place to meet these goals. And I'm just wondering, has there, you know, been any uh, investigation into hydrogen?
Yes, I looked at a little bit the, the options that we have, um, you know, battery electric. There's, there are more a wider variety of vehicles we can purchase. Um, the fuel cells are really currently, at least today, um, are really primarily only for the higher capacity bu- buses that you see Foothill Transit running or Metro running. Um, you know, we don't have the yard space or the ridership really to justify a vehicle of that size. I'm very curious to see if in the next couple of years, fuel cell makes its way into the twenty passenger range, which is what we have for our cutaways.
Okay.
Another thing to consider too is that with hydrogen fuel, you have to build in a fueling station at your yard. So it's very similar to CNG where you'd have to have that yard allocation um, devoted to fueling there. Um, so there, there's some space constraints that come with. I know Orange County Transit Authority um, installed a very large fuel cell. Um, I know other agencies like Foothill um, are doing the same thing. And so um, you know, there are, I'm hoping in the future we have more options to purchase in terms of the battery or the, you know, electric technology.
Okay, uh, appreciate it. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Um, other than making the observation that someone needs to buy Mr. Friedandall some ice cream because he's asked for the hours of the ice cream shop and he's talked about flavors of vehicles. So I think we need to help him out. But uh, no, thank you, Stephen, for uh, working on this and looking forward to adding this to the fleet.
Thanks, and we do stop at the different ice cream stores throughout town, so more than-
Do appreciate that observation.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, Stephen, just have a few questions for you. Uh, what's the life expectancy of this van?
Um, they last eight years. That's the, the useful life that the FTA has benchmarked for these. They can go up to ten years. I mean, as you saw in the staff report, um, the ones that we currently operate are, you know, a, above the eight years.
Okay, and Gary uh, beat this to death pretty well, a lot of, most of my questions, uh, but this is a, a carb approved um, vehicle that I noticed in the report. So is um, there are no availability anywhere in this range for hybrid and or electric? I mean, I know Gary asked the question, but um, yeah, and is hybrid even something that is feasible for this type of a van?
You know, it's hard to say where to, given that this has the lower floor for the wheelchair ramp, it's harder to fit battery packs into these. I know we're also limited to on what is in the uh, Cal Act Cooperative to purchase from them. There's just really not a lot of opportunity for us to step outside of that. Um, going forward, I know they are starting to look at using like the Ford Transit body as a, as a little electric alternative. Um, so that's something that I think could be an option for us. Um, I will know they are dramatically more expensive, at least currently right now. I know we've, we've been trying to procure another electric vehicle. Um, and we've had a lot of challenges getting through the voucher program the states implemented.
Okay, and uh, my last question is, this is uh, strictly uh, for a local around town. I would imagine this would probably go to Metro in Covina, I would imagine, and, and eventually to our Gold Line, but basically around town travel?
So with the F, with the section fifty-three ten funds, these can only provide service to passengers that are eligible for dollar rides. That would be sixty-five and older or disabled. So this would primarily go to anywhere in Glendora in the dollar ride system or to our select out of town medical trips. It would not be used on our fixed route service. Um, you could theoretically connect to the Gold Line. Um, but again, you wouldn't see this operating out of our, you know, transit parking lot lots.
Okay, so if someone wanted to go to the Metro in Covina, they couldn't use this van?
Uh, we could take them there if they're eligible for the dollar ride program.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a funny quirk of this program that it's only eligible for th- th- those populations.
All right, thank you. Does anyone want to entertain a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Alvia, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think I heard a, a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, a second by uh, council member Friedandall, I think I heard first. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote, council member Thompson.
Yes.
Council member Boyer.
Yes.
Council member Friedandall.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas.
Yes.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvia. This brings us to our last round, council and staff items. Like to invite uh, the council for some closing remarks if necessary or required. Mendel?
Stay masked up, shop and eat in our city and stay dry.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
Uh, none, thank you.
Uh, Gary?
No, nothing more.
Karen?
Mr. Mayor, I think you have uh, an announcement to make.
Thank you for the plug. Is that it?
Very nice.
Very well done, Karen. Uh, yes, I just want to remind everybody that the um, Mayor's uh, virtual prayer breakfast is February twenty-fourth. It's coming along quite nicely. Uh, the team led by Karen is doing a great job in trying to put this one of a kind out. Uh, hopefully next year, uh, we won't have, we won't be going through this, but you're going to be in for some really nice surprises. Also, the um, the city and the chamber are working on the um, the uh, the state of the city address that some are working on. Uh, Adam's leading that right now along with um, uh, Joe Sina. And hopefully we'll have a date out certainly pretty soon for that and we're working diligently on all of that. Uh, with that, uh, does anyone on staff, uh, Adam, you have, go ahead?
Just really briefly, um, two announcements, re-water billing. Uh, unfortunately, you know, staff made a mistake on about two thousand water bills that were sent out. We sent correction notices. Uh, unfortunately, some of the correction notices are not as clear as we should have done and we dropped the ball in that regard. If you do have questions on your water bill, please visit cityofglendora.org backslash water billing. Feel free to come into City Hall Tuesday through Thursday or call nine one four eight two three nine and we'll walk through any changes. Um, on the flip side, on the happy news side is uh, city council may recall, we approved a contract for InfoSend, uh, which is a new water billing system that is cheaper and has more information on the water bill. That information will be sent out soon, uh, with all the detail on what your new water bill will look like. So apologies from our end on, on the error we made for about two thousand accounts and look forward to assisting you any way possible to get through those. And with that, turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Bill, do you have anything?
Um, in the interest of council efficiency and to avoid a violation of your ten thirty curfew laws, I have nothing to add.
Well, you've got-
Mendel?
You've got thirty-three minutes to spare. Uh, anyone, anything from staff? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-seven PM in the memory of Mrs. Donna uh, Crowther, Mr. Michael Garvey and Mr. Raymond Mensur. Good night, everyone.
Night.